All right, call the meeting in order. I'll give you a stamp for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to go? Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Today is September ninth, two thousand nineteen. We're here at the Rutland Town School and the library for our monthly school board meeting. And it looks like we have all of our voting members present this evening. First item up is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody want to change? Have anything that they need to add to the agenda? We always flow around anyway, but is there any additions, changes, deletions? Not even going to take a motion on that. We'll move on to the next, which is teacher, staff, community comments. Anyone? Nothing at all. Director's orders. Sign those. If anybody wants to see them, obviously, check them out.
That's, I think, we got them in the email anyways, yep.
Yep. I'm pretty sure I verbally approved those over email.
Should you need it.
Perfect. Approval of the minutes, last meeting, August twelfth. I'll give you guys a couple of seconds to look this over.
It didn't seem like it went that long.
Yeah. Just trying to keep them thorough notes of everything.
Mm-hmm.
Very few edits.
And I want you to see that despite the number of pages there, Corinne, we were out at seven fifteen.
Yes.
It was quick.
It was. I don't see anything, so I'll make a motion.
Well, she made that meeting. So I have a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes. If I have a second to that motion by Lynette?
Second.
Seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Okay, sorry. Um, so as you might have guessed, school's open. And all staff gathered at Potney High School on the first day for Staff and Teachers, August twenty-sixth. The morning included introductions of all new staff, the introduction of the GRCSU UVM Teachers of the Year. And they were Sarah Marcus from Proctor Junior Senior High School and Tammy White from Potney Elementary School. And the way that works is you get to nominate two per year and they rotate it among the schools. So it was their turn. I guess they looked at the old ones, like who, because it was their first year of the merger. So that's just how it sugared out. Lisa Madison and academic coaches facilitated workshops and affinity groups on a variety of topics for all staff. And day two of professional development, the twenty-seventh, was in building-based and run by the principals. Many thanks to Lisa and her team for facilitating everything. The students, as you know, began school on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth. Lisa, Madison, and I have visited all the schools and we found the students SU-wide, they were all engaged in first-day activities. And it just varied from school to school. But, you know, everyone had planned and it was a good opening overall. All the schools looked great and many thanks go to the custodial and maintenance staff for their hard work. The contract addendums for the teachers, that's basically giving them their salary adjustment with the new contract, are signed and they have been distributed. All the new provisions of the contracts, such as the longer workday, are now in place. And we're continuing to work with the union on small details of implementing the contract. Mostly they're questions like, what does this mean? In fact, I just met with them, with Lewis this afternoon, and we went over a variety of things and, you know, were able to implement. There is a provision in the new contract regarding co-curricular study committee for each of the districts. There shall be four members of the committee appointed by the board and four appointed by the teachers. The contract states the work should start in September and conclude in December. So as you can tell by that timeframe, that's why I'm talking about it tonight. The purpose, and this is from the contract, is to quote, "Study programs offered, the structure of compensation, the question of whether athletics should be included in the co-curricular schedule." And then the committee will make a recommendation to the board. And if the board agrees to the recommendation, the schedule would be included in the 2020 master agreement. So we do have that on the agenda for later tonight, for the board to appoint four people. And we have a recommendation of maybe how that could work for the board appointments. And meetings, the VSBA regional meeting is actually tomorrow night for all the Rutland County school boards. And it's at Otter Valley High School. They, as you may know, they serve a light meal. And you can sign up online at vsba.org. I looked it up, it's easy to do. I know that there are several board members going from around the GRCSU. I don't know if anybody here signed up for it, but it's not too late if you want to go. And next, oh, yeah, next Thursday is the first Vermont superintendent's meeting. And it's going to cover information on Act One Seventy-three, Act Forty-six, Act Sixty-six, Act One Sixty-six, and school construction aid. And I just wanted to note, I thought the school construction aid was really interesting because as far as I can remember, there has not been school construction aid available since about two thousand and seven, if not earlier.
I think, no, it hasn't been that long, but it's been, yeah.
But the backlog was so long that nobody got their money.
Right.
So that's what I mean. It was around, but then they just, with the crash, it just totally, they haven't offered anything at all. So that will be interesting and I will share it with you when I get back after that meeting.
So let me ask you if I could, Judy. Is there anything we need to do for this co-curricular study committee? Do we need to appoint some people off this board or is that coming off of GRCSU?
Well, I have it under new business, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. No, I don't. Well, you do need to appoint. My recommendation would be your two principals, your athletic director, and then maybe one volunteer board member would be a good representation.
Judy, can you explain a little bit about this?
Yeah.
I don't know, do you have a lot, like, I'm just, I don't know what this is about.
I'm just a little confused about the... So what it's about is, I think, that, and I didn't negotiate the contract, so I wasn't in on the talk. So I'll give you my interpretation of kind of listening. It more, it's more concerning to Quarry Valley that has three high schools on what their co-curriculars will look like. And so they decided that instead of having one committee to look at the whole GRCSU, that they negotiated that each school should have their own committee. And the purpose of it is to look at, what do you offer? What does your salary schedule, if any, look like? You know, how do you pay your people? What would you recommend? Do you think that it should be in your contract? Or do you think it should just be out of the contract? And so it's a committee discussion to make a recommendation to the board. If you should make a recommendation that it goes into the contract, it would, it would be like automatically put into the 2020 contract.
Contract for, like, the teaching contract?
The teacher's contract.
Because sometimes the co-curriculars are not just teachers.
Exactly. So that's why you want to have a study committee, because every school district operates differently.
But even part of this is for compensation. And I'm sorry, but that's stripping us of too many rights.
And so if... And that is absolutely, and the, once the recommendation is made, it's made to the board and you guys can decide.
And what happens when you say no?
Then it's not the contract.
Is this, I'm a little still confused. Is this to come up with one for the whole district?
No.
So it's still independent to your, your own school?
This will just be our own.
Okay.
I just don't see where this is going to make a big difference when you sit down to do the contract. Depending on who's on this committee and they say yea, nay, it could make the process even more contentious than it is now. Know what I mean?
Yep.
Well, the way it's written, though, is that it...
There's a couple in the new one that I, yeah.
I'm just explaining.
I know, I'm not blaming.
Yep. So I think we at least, at minimum, just follow the steps. And then either way, it comes back to this board to vote on as to whether it's going to go from there. But I think we have to do the committee. Are you guys okay with the makeup? First of all, and second of all, is there a board member that wants to read at least me once or twice on this issue?
I can, I don't mind. I mean, unless somebody else is interested, yeah.
I anticipate, you know, for Rutland Town, I would think you could probably do this in three meetings, like in October, November, December, or September. Because, well...
Even two.
So we're just sitting down and kind of coming up with a list of our co-curriculars, including athletics, and then how we typically pay them, Judy?
Excuse me?
So we're just getting a laundry list of our co-curriculars, including athletics, and how much we have paid them. And then what we would recommend paying them.
Right. And you, you know, you may want to look at what other districts do.
Right, because there's a formula for some, yeah.
If you're not happy with what you've got.
Mm-hmm. How are the four appointed by the teachers?
I don't know, that's up to the teachers.
Do they, I mean, should, do we contact our union rep to find out who those four people are? Or should we just ask for volunteers from teachers to be there?
Oh, no, let, no, the union, it's, the union picks them, not us. If the board picks four, the union picks four.
So they'll let us know who those four people are?
Yes, and I'll let them know that we have our committees when they're all ready to go.
And are you okay, that both of you be on there?
Yeah.
And I take it that means Mike Rowe, there's three.
Yeah, we got to ask him.
And Corinne.
And four would be Corinne. So do I have a motion to appoint this one?
Why wouldn't Mike Rowe be on the teacher?
What's that?
Is he a teacher?
He could be, but he needs to be on the athletic side, I think, for us.
Yeah, but he's just the AD part-time, he's a full-time teacher.
Correct.
Yep.
So I think he should be on the teacher's side, not on our four.
I don't think we have anybody to represent the athletics, though, is the problem. It's going to be Mike, no matter what. So why don't we appoint our four with Mike Rowe? And then if it's a problem, then we can, you know, change it next month.
And I will mention that Wells Springs did this last week. And I encourage them to select a second, they actually selected two, a second board member as an alternate in the event that maybe somebody can't make it or Mike does, you know, it doesn't work with Mike because he does have a teacher hat, too, that you could have another person, just, you know, an alternate, just in case.
Well, my thought is...
There's going to be two or three meetings, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Yep.
I'm just, it's almost to me, I'm thinking it's a mini negotiation committee.
Yep. But at the same time, the, you know, if they want to end up picking Mike for that, the, you could also take Keith Snyder up here on our side and, you know, divide it up however we want to. I mean, it doesn't, I just would like to have someone on our athletics, at least, sitting on...
Yeah, he should be on the committee regardless of which, whether he's...
Which side, one way or the other.
Right, right, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any more, like, information, Judy, that we can get about this? Like, is there specific, like, language and...
I would say...
It's in the contract. As a matter of fact, can I read it to you?
Yeah, or I can read it on my own, just so we're prepared for the meeting.
So here's what my thought is. I would call Chris Leopold. And I've told, I've told Chris, he's the attorney for both this board and GRCSU. And if people have questions, because Chris was there for every piece of the negotiations, everything that went on, what the reasoning and philosophy was for this thing, I didn't personally...
Yeah, but who would be other than Chris? Because Chris is, we're going to be, like, paying Chris every time we talk to Chris. Who is, like, in charge of this whole thing?
I think maybe Lewis might have some more.
Okay. I have it right here. I can read it verbatim or I could just pick out the...
Well, I can read it, I don't want to take up too much time. I can certainly, just so we know exactly what we're doing when we have these meetings, so they're productive and...
Oh, I would write out some guidelines for you, like a charge to the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do a charge to the committee and I'll, I'll lift that language and put it right in for you.
All right.
Thank you. So it's, it's Article D there.
Yeah, I see it.
And the other thing I just wanted to add, I'll piggyback this on to what Judy is just talking about. One of the other issues that came out of the contract, one of our policies we'll ultimately have to change here is that, and I always say it's probationary teachers, but it's probationary teachers, some special educators, anybody on probation. It turns out, the policy that I put into effect here on the board a few months ago, you know, whatever, six months ago, whatever it was, when we finally put it in place, maybe a year ago now, somewhere in that neighborhood, is not compliant with state law. So state law is requiring for probationary teachers that they get two evaluations a year. And that's what's mandated. So what's different with my policy was is that a year and a half, basically, superintendent and principals come back to us with all people that are leaving probationary status and becoming permanent teachers at the school, and they go through a review process. So that all stays the same. The only difference is, though, state law requires that two evaluations be done on all probationary teachers every year.
I was going to say, you do that anyways, right?
We do that.
So, yes, so I just, I'm reiterating that I hope that that gets done. I also hope it gets done on the SU side because I think that applies to the special educators. Not the non-contract employees, but anyway, that we have to do that.
Yes.
She's doing all the special...
Otherwise, it causes renewal issues. So the weird thing is, is that on their second year, we're going to have to get in two evaluations by February. We're going to have to, if that's when we're going to start looking at...
Last year, we did them by January.
Perfect.
We're on it.
And we already talked about supervision violation at our first faculty meeting and said that we have to have them done by January.
Perfect.
That gives us a little bit more time to...
Yeah.
Beautiful.
We're on it.
Well, moving on to the co-principals' report.
So we, you heard a little bit about our seventh-grade science field trip, as soon as they're going snorkeling, which is pretty cool. We have a fifth-grade social studies field trip happening also in two weeks, where they're going to be learning about Vermont's indigenous peoples, which is pretty cool. Our seventh grade is getting ready for their trip to Camp Chinga Chuk. So we're excited about that. We're also going to have a presentation by the Law Enforcement Against Drugs group. They're going to be coming in on September twenty-seventh to do some presentations for our fifth, sixth, and eighth graders. So don't be surprised if there's a large law enforcement presence here because there'll be a bunch of folks in uniform here that day. So don't be surprised.
Awesome.
Yeah, it is, it's really cool. Our school photos are October first and our eighth-grade trip to Washington DC, do we have a date on that, Sarah? I think she has that.
Yeah.
And do you want to ask about that now?
Yes, and I don't know if you want me to do this now, I'm just looking at the date. I want to make sure I have the correct dates. We're planning that for, right after Memorial Day, so the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, the last week in May. So I know that for any overnight trip, I believe Camp Chinga Cook was already approved at a previous board meeting, but any overnight trip needs to be approved by the board by November fifteenth. So I would ask that at some point, if you would, the board could approve that eighth-grade Washington DC trip.
Are they all set money-wise, ready to go?
No. So what, what you've typically said is, as long as they can raise enough money so all students can attend. That's, has been in years past.
How much is it, Sarah, in total that has to be raised?
Approximately six hundred dollars per person. And we have, I have been talking about fundraising, you know, urging kids to start that over the summer.
Do you know how much there is so far, like, to date?
I think a couple hundred dollars, if that. Yep. So we, I sent a letter to families asking who would need assistance last week. So I, I will know in a, in a week and a half, how much money we will need to raise for those that need assistance.
Okay.
So it varies from a few thousand to twenty thousand.
And every year, we always have a couple parents on point. Who are the parents this year on point?
I don't have parents on point yet, so it's something that I've helped organize. But what we'll do is we'll have, once I have those permission forms stating who needs assistance and who doesn't, I'll then have at least some numbers. So then we will have a meeting with all the eighth-grade families. Usually, given the numbers, we'll, we can have up to about twelve parents that can go on the trip as chaperones. So they will be in rooms with their, their child and some other kids. And we sometimes have to draw out of a hat if too many parents want to attend the trip.
I know that there's a lot of talk. So there are women already planning things.
Oh, yeah, yep, there, I've talked to a lot of parents that have somewhat taken the lead.
Right.
And I've given them a lot, just over, we have a listserv that we started last May with the eighth-grade parents that I said, here are some figures, this is what has worked, you know, these are some fundraising ideas. This has worked well in the past, I encourage over the summer, X, Y, and Z. I would really love to see more students become involved in fundraising. It's a lot, and I try to remove myself, I just don't think it's something that I should be, you know? I can support and help and provide ideas.
I had students ask me today about hosting a wiffle ball tournament.
Yeah. Yeah.
So they're working on that.
How many total eighth graders are there in the class?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
And do any, do you ever have years that, like, kids just opt out, that they don't want to go?
Last year, we maybe have one, two, I think one year there was five that didn't go. But our hope is that all kids, and we've also had years where all of them attend. It's one of the best trips I've ever been on, I, literally, one of the best trips that I've ever been on. I think it is priceless. These kids learn so much. I had some fantastic teachers that, you know, it's a lot of work, it is twenty-four-seven. But it's, again, I think it's a memory that, I mean, even, I've been here eight years now, that kids will say that was, you know, I'll never forget this, this opened my eyes to this. There are many kids that have never left Rutland. I have had kids that never slept in a hotel before.
Ran an escalator?
Yeah, ran an escalator, you got that right, yeah.
I make a motion, go ahead and prove, with this money issue.
That all kids can attend.
Seconded by Corinne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
So for our PD and faculty work, Sarah has a new teachers' club where she meets with the new teachers monthly to have them ask questions or talk to each other about things that they would like to do. Where we are having PLC leadership team meetings. So all the PLC leaders will meet with us monthly as well to hear what's happening in all the PLCs. We usually try and get to them all, but some days that doesn't work during PLC time. So we have those meetings to kind of find out the direction and kind of guide that group and help get feedback from them for us as well.
And I think within that, we're calling it the leadership meeting, or committee as well, because we have our guidance counselor and our interventionist that also serve on that committee.
We'll have our crisis committee meetings starting...
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, and we'll meet monthly. And we'll have our new SRO, Amber Hool, joining us as well with John Sly. And Chief Dumas has offered to pop into some of those meetings also to kind of help us get, make sure everything's where we need it to be. And we're starting to plan for some of our evacuation drills. Today, we had our bus evacuation drill and we'll be planning our whole school evacuation shortly. Also, I think you have a copy there of our, that's the maintenance... Didn't get included?
No.
Paper, yeah, the CIP review, the last page. The CIP review is our continuous improvement plan, that's what that stands for. And we have four goals on our continuous improvement plan. And these are the things that we're working on as a school. Some of the things that are listed under these bullet points are things that we've been working on or are working on this year to help address these. Our first goal is to increase the number of students at or above proficiency in ELA and math in grades four through eight. So we're utilizing Lexia in our ELA classes. The kids really seem to enjoy that program. And that's kind of as an additional to support to what's happening in the classroom in terms of reading instruction. We get good data and results from that. Some students have been even wanting to play it at home because it's, it's game-based for them as well. And it challenges them based on their own efforts. So if a student brings it home and says, oh, I want to do this, don't help them. Because if you're helping them, then you're skewing the results a little bit because it'll make it a little harder or a little easier as they progress. So if something's a little too difficult, they'll back off. If it's too easy, they'll, they'll move, they'll make it a little tougher on them, so that's helpful. We're also using DreamBox. And actually, we're using that not just in five through eight, we're using it in third and fourth grade also, and that's for the math. And that pretty much does the same thing. We have our math interventionist, Karen, who you met tonight, Karen Rose, in grades five through eight. And she's been, for now, starting to get to know the students and the teachers by pushing them to all of those classrooms, five through eight, working with students, getting to know them, figuring out who she needs to help. And they're getting very used to just having her around in their classes, which is great. Next year, we want to think about a reading interventionist for the middle school. We've been using our elementary reading interventionists to help out as much as they can. But it's, it's, we're not, I don't think we're getting to enough students that we'd like to. So that's something we want to think about. We're also starting our new map testing. We're going to replace the STAR testing with maps. And our first group of students started that today. So you'll be hearing kids talk about that. And again, it's adaptive. One of the stories I heard today was one of the students, the teacher, you can watch him. They were going a little too fast, they were just clicking through. And the teacher went over and said, you know, if you go too fast, you'll have to do it again. Oh, sorry. And then they slowed down and actually were applying themselves. So it's, it's really an interesting thing. Again, it's adaptive for the student. And we're looking forward to the in-depth reports that we're going to get from maps that hopefully, the teachers even said that. They said, I can't wait to see what those reports look like so I can see what my students particularly need. They get their results back right away so they know how to target their instruction. And then we're going to be continuing to use foundations assessments in grades...
K-three, that should be K-three.
Instead of four.
And I will add that Lexia, DreamBox, and maps are things that we, that Rutland Southwest has used, the previous Rutland Southwest. So we've been able to, I've seen that being used in, in Middletown and Wells when I went to visit there before. So they've been very helpful. I would also say some of these programs, I was just talking to one of our reading teachers today, that sometimes at middle school age, it's tough to get some students to really do their best. So there was a handful of kids that came out very, very low and we know that that's not where they're at. So we said, you know, you have, we're going to start again and you're going to try this again. We know you're not reading at kindergarten level. And they're like, well, do I have to? So I think when we look at some of these scores, you really have to know the whole child. And we want them to do their best. And I think one of the things that we do have now is, you know, we have a math interventionist for the middle schools. We're going to say, you know, if you need the help, then that's where you're going to go. So I'm hoping that that will be another push for them to really show us what they can do. But it's, those online tests are hard because some kids just don't want to put in the time.
And our other goals, our second goal is to ensure that students learn technology skills related to keyboarding and the Google Suite. And there's a variety of things listed there. We're using technology from pre-K through eight. We have, the pre-K students were using interactive boards with their teachers. They also were doing, using things like digital cameras and taking pictures around the school, which was really, really great last year. And they'll continue to use those again this year. Some of these little things, these little Ozo bots that they can kind of program to do different things, that they're learning how to use, which is amazing. You know, all first and second graders are using a keyboarding without tiers program. So they're learning how to type, which is a great skill since they're taking these maps tests and using their computers. Last year, we had kindergartners learning how to log on to the Chromebooks. And they got pretty good at it, pretty quickly.
Some of them would send us Mrs. Rodolfini an email.
They'd send us emails, asking us what our favorite color is.
Yeah, and other things, yeah.
So, so there's a lot of that happening. Third and fourth graders working together as tech buddies on their PLPs. So they're teaching each other some of the computer skills that they've learned. So we're doing a great job at working on that goal. The third one is to ensure students take ownership of their learning by goal-setting, reflecting on their learning, working toward their potential, and being engaged in their learning. And this is pretty much working on student engagement across the board throughout the school. And it's happening in a variety of ways. Each teacher and each classroom does it a little bit differently. But that's really an all-school goal. We want our students to be actively involved in their schoolwork. We want them to have a voice in what they're learning and to be, and to be part of that environment, be happy to be at school. So that's, you know, and there's some examples that are listed there. I don't want to take the time to read this to you. And the fourth goal is to decrease time out of the classroom due to behavioral issues, create and sustain a safe and healthy environment that's conducive to learning, and improve social and emotional health. So this summer, as we told you before, our middle school teachers were, a bunch of them were trained in developmental designs. And the elementary classrooms were working on responsive classroom. Our middle school students are working in TA. And one of the things they've been working on right now is they've created a social contract for the middle school from five through eight. They've, each TA has come up with three basic rules for the school that they will agree to. And then they all sent a representative and they came up with a list of five, basically, things that they agreed to in terms of their behavior during school. And then we're going to take... And then we're going to take those, and they've all, they're all signing this social contract of how they're going to behave during the school day and what they're going to do. And we're going to have those laminated and put around in each of the classrooms, because they've come up with that together. So that's that ownership of learning, ownership of the environment, and we're really kind of proud of that. Um, I also have a committee of eighth graders working right now to, uh, come up with some suggestions on how to make the lunchroom better.
Yeah, I, I heard they were stripped of, uh, their privileges.
Eighth grade? Yeah, yeah, we just, um.
Nope, they just, it's not really stripped of their privileges, is they have to come up with what they want their privileges to be.
Right, but in the past, they were always built in.
They went with, they went with one teacher to have, um, lunch with just the eighth graders, and we don't have the flexibility within the contractor schedule to do that.
So I heard that we had kids eating on the floor.
That's not true.
Would you address it?
Yeah, no one sat on the floor. We have, we have a big lunch group, five through eight. There are no students sitting on the floor. We did open a couple more tables.
How, how much time do they have? That's a lot of raids. Issues with like them kids that are getting like lunch, standing in line.
They have plenty of time to go through the line and get their lunch, to actually move quite through quite smoothly. The only issue that we've had been slowing it down is if students are going through the line, and they have a negative balance, so if they owe on their account, the cafeteria is not allowing them to purchase extra things. They get their lunch, but they're not allowing them to use cash to buy a switch or an ice cream or something like that. So that's, you know, you get your free lunch, but you're not going to be purchasing those. And that slows it down a little bit. Uh, anytime a negative balance pops up, it slows down the machinery and, and how they have to address their, so if they go through and they put their code in, and they have a positive balance, it's very quick. So sometimes it slows it down at the register, if that's the case. But that's really the only issue that we've had, and that's very minor. Everyone gets through with their food.
And we're going to be sticking with that for the rest of the year, fifth through eighth?
Yeah, and I think especially when these kids go to high school, it's, it's similar. It's, it's, you know, most high schools, it's a packed lunchroom. You have, they actually have a shorter time to eat. Um, so again, I think it's just a change. The eighth graders were used to sitting by themselves, you know, with a teacher and
They look forward to.
They look forward to it and they wait, and we just don't, we didn't have that.
Have the supervision.
We don't have the supervision, and we don't have it in a con, we can't, we can't do that. So they're in with.
So when you say there's a half an hour.
Yes.
Okay, I know they all don't converge on the lunchroom at once.
Yes, they do.
So you've got little guys and the big guys.
No, I have the little guys going out, and the big guys standing there waiting for the little guys are out the door.
Okay, so if there's a half an hour, how many are in line waiting for lunch? When, how much time has the last guy got to get his food and eat?
Probably about fifteen minutes.
Yep.
That's not really acceptable. That's not enough time.
I haven't had anybody complaining that they don't have time to eat their food.
Well, I'm just saying, one of the things in, as far as health goes, and they're all saying our children are getting overweight, they're whatever. Okay, if you have to hurry up and gobble down your food because you have fifteen minutes, we are not teaching them the nutrition the way we should. Um, I'm not saying they should all have thirty minutes to eat. But fifteen minutes is not, I think they even have twenty minutes up at the high school.
Did this change occur just because we have just changes in the contract and like less, was this to?
This was to make, we put the fifth grade in with, with six, seven, and eight because
Middle school.
Part of the middle school. And to schedule everyone appropriately, so that they got what they needed, and so that the teachers were available, we had to put them all together in the same lunch.
And I think, again, when you say at the high school, they may have fifteen, twenty minutes, it's the same thing. They have more kids going into the lunchroom and
And, and the majority of students when they come in.
Trying to see what their lunch schedule is.
And eat their lunch. Major, a majority of the students bring their lunch to school, and they sit down. If they want to go up and get something, they wait till the line goes through, and then they get something else at the end of the line. So there's additional kids, maybe that's what I'm thinking of. The ones that get on the end of the line there after they've already eaten their lunch. It's usually the last ten minutes no one's eating.
Did we, and did we, did we totally strip? I thought last year, seventh graders got like fifteen minutes of recess.
That's a teacher, that's a teacher who volunteered to take them outside.
And so now we don't have a teacher to.
No, we don't have any.
We don't have enough supervision. And I think the other thing is that, um, what I had said is this lunch is too long. I mean, I had said that to Debbie. I'm like, these kids are eating and done in ten minutes, and then they're, that's why there's behavior problems. They're wild. We got to get them outside and get them to do something because they're done. They're done eating.
But now they don't get any recess, correct?
The fifth grade teachers cho, have, um, self-directed them, so they want to bring their kids out to recess. Seventh and eighth grade don't. We, and years before, we didn't have that either. It was
It disappeared at sixth grade.
Six through eighth, yeah, never had, for years.
Understand that. We spoke about it last year and the year before, because every academic study that hits my desk, across the board, the results are so solid. Why you tend to see performance go down in middle school is because kids aren't given enough breaks to burn off that energy, and that's why they.
PE. We have more PE.
But that's only three days a week, right? Yep, but.
Can I ask, how many ki, how many people do you have in the lunchroom with the students now?
Three, three.
For?
But I, s, per day.
For, for which grades? Like, at, at lunch?
Five through eight. We also have more people with the K one-twos to open.
Sandwich baggies, help kids with choices, straws.
Gogurts, so that they don't squirt all over the place.
I don't know, uh, you know, I'm not familiar enough with your building to see what the process is between the lunchroom and going to the, outside to the playground, but.
Well, this year, we've had, our recess is before lunch.
Uh-huh.
Which has really helped with, you know, our K one-twos have recess first, then they come into the lunchroom, lunchroom, which is way quieter this year than it used to be because they come in from outside. And, you know, in the five through eight group, the fifth graders are outside for about fifteen minutes before they come inside, and they sit right down and eat.
But what are, are you finding more disciplinary or, because I hear, well, we can't talk, we can't whatever. So we have, we are not recess, so we can't talk to each other. Because if we get in the TA and we start talking, then we get set. I'm just saying, some of these stories I'm getting back, um, are just, and not from my own. I haven't asked my grandchildren, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're definitely allowed to talk in the lunchroom. It's loud.
And so one of the things I also recall was when we moved fifth grade to the middle school, Aaron Boynton was still here in principal, and we had made it essentially, I thought crystal clear, which is those fifth graders never lose recess. So if it stays at the sixth grade to the eighth grade, they have it. I'm here and they're getting the fifteen minutes, but that was clearly one of the attend. Because I knew there was, there was some major board resistance as to whether you were going to add fifth grade to the middle school to begin with. It's been like this since, you know, roughly sixty-seven, from what I could tell.
What happened was, fifth grade was moved to the middle school hallway.
Yes.
And that was pretty much all that happened, right? They weren't really, they weren't really including.
Locker and they shared TAs.
Yes.
So we're really trying to make them really included in that piece. So
Yeah.
This has been an effort to do that, um, to make them feel like they're part of the middle school.
So is, are we running three lunch periods now? That's it?
Yes.
So there's three lunch, and that's what we did last year as well? Or do we have four?
I think we had four last year.
We had four. So we're down to three. And did we do that to meet the schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Hands down, without a doubt, had to do this to meet the schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Why are we short on people for recess?
So we're going to, I would like to take that up in executive session. Anyway, that would be my thought later on. I want to have a discussion about this, so everyone's clear as to where this came from and how this came about.
Because it's about the contract.
It's about that new contract.
And that's what I mean. And, and there's, yeah, I won't get into that. We'll go in executive session for that.
Yep.
I was trying to look at a high school lunch schedule, but it doesn't break it down, um, per, but from what I, it's about twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Right, but you're talking fifth to eighth graders here.
Correct, yep.
I think this is the, definitely an issue the board has to be, stay on top of. And if it is going to be like this for a year, um, so be it. But I don't want to see this happen next year. And so, anyway, that's going to be a bone of contention, certainly on the issue side of negotiations.
You don't want to see what happened next year?
I understand. I have, we'll discuss it in negoti, or in executive session, but I have no problem saying this on the record that I've determined how this came about, how this change, uh, happened to Rutland Town, how we got
Be surprised.
How, what this issue was, what people made for representations in those negotiations, and that's going to be dealt with uh, at the next one, which we're starting negotiations immediately.
No, no, I understand. I'm in the loop on that. I'm just saying, you don't, you want to see more.
I want to, we're going back to the way it was.
The four lunch periods. Is that what you're referencing?
Yes, we're going to go back and we're going to deal with the staffing issue.
Okay.
And, um, so anyway, but we'll deal with that in executive session. We'll have a talk about that. That's going to be, you know, dealt with squarely. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry this happened to you guys, and I'm sorry this got thrust upon the school.
I just think it's a, for me, and I know it's totally not your guys' fault at all. I, this is totally our questions or not. We, we know how this has all started. I just think honestly, the kids are complaining, it's, it's a lot of kids in a lunchroom. I mean, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh, eighth, that is not like relaxing. I mean, it seems like a lot of kids. I mean, I think in my lunch, kind of quiet, somewhat calm. I know there's always behavioral issues, and the kids are always going to be.
Lunchroom.
Adds like a whole additional.
It's loud.
It's.
And they're all talking, so they all have to get louder in order just to talk to the guy next to them. And, and it's just, I just can picture it as a zoom.
By the way, two, the four classes put together, I didn't see the numbers. Were we pushing about a hundred and fifty?
No, it's like a hundred and twenty.
I mean, that room is small. I mean, it's not that big.
No, no, but I'm saying, I'm just talking about people inside that room. So you got at least two teachers. You have the lunch personnel that are there, a hundred and twenty kids, and then whoever else has to come in there. We're pushing a hundred and thirty people at that block.
I, I think it's ridiculous, in my opinion. Okay.
All right, perfect. So let's move on if we can. We're going to, we're going to take care of that. We'll also, this is going to come back around on the chairs report as well. Um, where we're looking at, anyway, we'll deal with it then. Uh, but we have a bigger problem right now, which is the monthly budget update. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to see the rest.
Oh, and I did, I, I'm sorry, I read that.
Do you mind, Debbie? I'm sorry, I don't want to take up too much time, but I definitely would like to, in the future, maybe put this on the agenda and kind of address this. I think this is something we've talked about kind of on and off the last year and a half. Um, with goal one, to increase the number of students at or above proficiency. I definitely think we'd like to get just like a little more into the weeds on that at some point, and just kind of take a look at, you know, and I can certainly help, like, doing a cohort analysis and just really getting into performance academically. How are we looking the last few years? Like, when I read this, this goal, I don't really know if we're where we should be, if we're behind, if we're above. So I would really like to get into that at, maybe in a future board, certainly not now.
Share, um, we did share some of that in the spring. Um, we shared some of our reading and math data. Um, because some of that SPAC stuff, I think when Adam Rosenberg was here, it was really hard, and it was all like dif, color-coded and different lines. So we brought some that was just plain graphs to show, this is how many kids, like, they're in the green, yellow or red.
Right.
So we did something like that bef, before, um, and you saw, especially with our younger grades, the, you know, the progression, and I really, of kids increasing their proficiency in both reading and math. And I think one thing is that we have some phenomenal teachers that, you know, it's really that tier-one instruction. Um, and then we have all these safety nets. You know, we're very appreciative that the board and community.
Starting from kindergarten, but it's upper grades that aren't getting caught.
Right, you got it, yeah. And then sometimes you have kids that move in, um, you know, that, that haven't been here since kindergarten or preschool. So we can absolutely.
Yeah, and another future board, maybe I think we should look at that.
A presentation tonight on the school snapshot, so we'll get a little background on that. That's a good place to begin.
Maybe some benchmarks? Will we start?
Yeah, yeah.
We're excited about having.
Question I had, I, on, uh, four, decreased time out of classroom. Do we track that now? Do we know how many hours are outside of that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So one of the things that we, we don't have a really good, um, I would love to report that in a, in a easy way, that you could look at, similar to what we did with reading and math last year. Um, we currently, our student information system is called Infinite Campus, and it doesn't extract that data for you to show where most of, what I would like to see, where are most of these behaviors happening? Like, physical location, what time of day are they happening, what grades, gender, all of those things that I would like to sit down and analyze. Um, because that's how we'd be able to target the problem, right? Um, we don't have that. Um, so we're able to, you know, look at that data maybe on a student, and I'm able to track, okay, I can see it's always happening at this time or in this location, but we don't. Um, we were given, um, when I came Swiss, but I don't believe it's working. Um, so Swiss is, um, a lot of schools that use, um, posi, positive behavior intervention supports are called like a PBIS school. They receive, um, this software called Swiss, and it's able to do just that. It's able to graph and track and extract this data for you. Um, Christine Cam was wonderful and was able to give us, um, somehow, um, through grant, I'm not sure. She was able to give us a license to use it. But we weren't able to get it up and running until February last year, from the tech side of things, for a number of reasons. So, um, and then I was told that that isn't working right now. So I would love if we could.
Paid for it.
We just paid for it, okay. Yeah. So I, to answer your question, no, but we do have something that's able to do. It, it's just not working right now.
Any idea on what it would take to get it to be working, or probably two, maybe next nut month would be?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wrote it down too. Was it that you had to pay for the license?
I don't, I just assumed we didn't have it.
Maybe. It happened on my list. Okay.
Okay.
So then for, um, our maintenance report that Ryan put together, he might stop by, just let him know that we were at that part. He's running around. Our evening custodian called in sick, so he's, he's working, running around, doing some stuff, but he'll be back. So he, um, has been working on the HVAC controls, and really happy with the improvement in the air quality in the building based on what he's been able to do so far. We have, as he says here, we have a building set to purge two AM every morning, so that the air is removed from the building and refreshed. Um, so he's already, um, been working on that and, uh, getting our carbon dioxide count down inside the building, which is great as well. Um, the security glass is, it was scheduled for Tuesday, the third, but it's still not here yet. It has to come, it has to arrive during the day, so we can rent a forklift to get it off the truck. Um, and as soon as it's here, they'll start installing it. Um, I think their plan is to start on Monday. Um, in terms of some pest control issues that we've been looking into, um, we had an estimate from Orkin, but Ryan's looking at, um, kind of doing a plan on our own first to see how that works. Um, and, uh, if we don't get good results, then we'll go back to Orkin and have that taken care of. Um, we had a little water issue in Mrs. Jaboys' room, but, uh, over the summer. But, uh, that seemed to be fine. There was no damage in there, so that was great. Luckily, everything had been removed from the room to do the floors, so it was, if something was going to happen, that was the perfect time. Our security cameras are going to start being installed on Monday, the sixteenth.
What was the delay on that?
The cabling.
Because we had the plan, and we thought it was going to be done by now.
Yep.
And of course, with the vandalism, really would been, I mean, I don't understand mentally why it was passed in March, and here we are in September. We don't have the windows, we don't have the security cameras up. What the hell? We can wait three more months and just go out again for the stuff. I don't understand what the delay was.
Um, the person, the people that were, um.
We had to wait till July, we had to wait till the fiscal year.
Yeah, we had to wait till July first to do it. And then when those folks came in to do, we had to have someone separate do the cabling for the cameras. We had to bid on the cameras, and we had to have a different company do the cabling. And the person in that company who did the cabling was injured and in the hospital for a couple weeks, so we had to wait for that to happen. So then they came in and finished that up, and they were great. They did a Greenmount Telecom did a great job.
I knew that, I knew the, everything but the cameras were hooked up when the vandalism had, because you can see where the camera should be.
We do have cameras out there working.
Yeah, they're still working.
They were working when the vandalism happened, and we can talk more about that in executive session.
Um, so the cameras are still working, the, the old cameras are still there, but they, um, they weren't ready to install them anyway until the sixteenth from Royals. So that was the date they had given us over the summer. They have the cameras, they're ready to go. They're waiting for the cabling. They put us on the list of installation, so we're set for next week.
We'll have to remember, next time we go out to bid and we accept the bids, we're, we're going to get a date, and they're going to do it by then, or they're going to lose money. Because I really, this is the first time ever that I've seen such a delay on work.
The, uh, the school guard glass, there was, um, a backlog in ordering that from them, getting it from the manufacturer, as you might imagine, as many schools around the country. There's only a couple of places you can get that glass from. So Portland Glass had, had a tough time getting that, so, you know. Said we need a forklift and it has to be delivered here during the school day. We don't want it at, uh, when kids are arriving or when they're leaving. Cause you're gonna have that big truck with all the glass. But they're planning to start that next week also. Um, so we'll be working on that. They'll start with the doors first.
And that's an interesting topic while we're there too. It's, you know, Rattletown's already been decided, but if anybody in the future is dealing with this at another district and looking into doing this, it ever comes up. The, uh, one of my friends happens to be the rep for New York, uh, that works for the other major security company in the United States. Actually, comes, the glass comes in from Israel, um, and that one is full, complete bulletproof. But anyway, the, uh, anyway, he's the representative there. There is no rep for Vermont at all. And so anyway, so he's looking at, you know, pushing over into Vermont and covering New York and Vermont and works for the company that does that. So anyway, I was gonna pass that information along to you. He may get in touch with other board members, but if that ever comes up, because we were working here, because there wasn't a rep here. So it was through the local, down to Portland Glass, this, that.
The whole thing has been a mess.
And, so anyway, the, these guys cover the schools from Colorado to New York to Florida.
Cause you can invite them to bid, you know, send a letter.
Oh, yeah, I know. Well, online, there's a bunch of them that, and most of them are, some of them are the newest, they're from New York. And that's who I thought, and then it was just Royal Glass, Royal Glass.
Yeah, well, actually Portland got this one. Royal didn't even get this one. Portland ended up with it and it was where they could get it from, so. Anyway, and that's one of the unfortunate, you know, parts of being Vermont, being so small.
You're right. Um, in terms of, um, the nurses floor, I, we had some, uh, some of the glue kind of coming up between the, um, the vinyl floor plating that was there. We had someone come in and test the glue and the glue is fine. Um, we-
It's glue.
It's glue. It's just, but there was nothing dangerous in the glue. So we, um, had that repaired, but again, some of it's coming up. We are not sure whether, we thought there was a leak in the toilet that was causing some water from underneath to dissolve some of the glue and have it come through. But we fixed that last year, so that's not it. We're concerned that there might be a leak in the pipe underneath the foundation. But we won't be able to tell and look at that until Christmas break. And Ryan said he can at least open it up and take a look at it to see if we can repair it, or if not, what we would have to do. Is that gonna be part and partial to the freezing of the school? Not caught at the time? I don't know. So just have him look into that, because that would be under that, yep, coverage by insurance. Okay, I'll ask him about that.
Sarah and Debbie, what is our total enrollment? What is the number up to?
Three sixty-three?
Three sixty-three.
Three sixty-three. I just asked this morning. Forty-six kindergarten kids.
Is that where the bulk of the year, cause we're usually three fifty?
No, we've got new middle school kids, we have-
Kids across the board.
Yep, kids across the board.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? I don't think so.
Great, thank you guys. Next discussion, monthly budget update. Get some cider for this one, but Lynette can certainly add some insight to us. The, uh, I saw the email exchange go back and forth. Lynette's certainly the most experienced when we get to budgeting items, money. I have been hearing, my understanding along the lines was that we were looking at almost an eighty thousand dollar surplus, uh, somewhere in that neighborhood. That number was given to me less than a month ago, had moved up to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar surplus, which came out. And then suddenly there was an email a few days ago from Louis saying that we're actually a budget deficit of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. He's recommending-
I did get that email.
And, uh, that just came up to myself, Judy and the principals, from Louis.
Cause I was gonna say, I didn't get that.
Just barely made it up there. I, just trying to process it. It came Friday or, or Thursday night or Friday. So we're talking less than two days before the board meeting. This just came up, immediate freeze, he's recommending this. And I'm not sure, I really understand. I wasn't able to get the time unfortunately because of work to call Louis today. Um, to at least get a little more information on it. I'm personally confused right now at this moment, need more information. And the reason was, if we were looking at a surplus of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand as a month ago, and now I'm looking at a deficit of two sixteen, um, where am I and why am I here?
Well, it looks like instructional, most of it, and bill backs. So I guess I'd have to see the individual bills and the reasoning behind them, because that's unacceptable. So either we figure out what went wrong and hopefully it's an error, or we put a freeze on the budget, period. Cause we cannot go forward with a two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar deficit.
Agreed. I just, I haven't heard that we're in the red. I haven't heard-
I hadn't either until right this second.
So, I mean, I've heard surplus, surplus, so I said, I get this email and I said, I, I thought when we were hiring these positions, we included Louis in this conversation about where we could save money. We had a surplus.
Absolutely, we did.
And I get an email on the third day of school saying this.
It's unacceptable. I don't understand how it could've jumped like that.
I don't either.
In that short a time.
Uh, right.
So Louis should've been here tonight, because probably a good thing he's not, but-
No, it isn't. But I think the, the other thing that I, i- is concerning for me, and I know the superintendent will speak to him about this, was, but Louis did in those emails at least indicate, you guys knew this. This was discussed, and I don't recall it ever being discussed, ever.
Always a surplus, or we wouldn't have said, go ahead, fix the field.
We never would've had those people here. It never would've happened. So I was, at the end of the day, and for Louis to say, yes, this was discussed, or how you think you could spend this money. I mean, one of his responses were, how could you think that you could add new teachers and do all this spending and then not run into a deficit? I just had a piece of paper last month showing a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar surplus. That's exactly why we did it. That's why we added the teacher.
Exactly, and we had, we had said, and then we put some down, we said, no, we better wait, just in case a surprise comes up, we still need, definitely gotta get Louis in here next time.
I will have Louis come next week.
Yep, and I can, I can certainly say, it can be, relate to him though, Judy, that it-
Yep, and I want it itemized, I want it itemized more than this. You're not just gonna give me a line that says, oh, you're a hundred and fourteen short here, you're a hundred and thirty-four thousand here. Um, I wanna know exactly.
Lynette, I don't even think we should wait a month though. I mean, this is, I think we should, we, I think, like, what can we do about this right now? Because this is a substantial amount of money. I mean, can you make this a priority to kinda do, uh, analysis?
And I think one of the things he said, added third grade teacher, but we sat at the board meeting when these parents came, and we, and we talked about kindergarten, third grade. And I said, I, you kept saying, pick one, pick one. I said, I can't, because we didn't budget for another third section.
And then we, cause of the surplus.
Deborah and Louis, they said, oh, well, if we have, I think, money from the HVAC, which was put on there, I could save this and use the surplus. So to me, again, this is hard to understand. So I said, then yes, you know, I, I mean, you were asking, what do you need, Sarah? And I said, then I would advocate for this. If I had known this, I would've, we all would've probably said, we can't do it. We have to make-
There's no way.
We have to wait and see what K-numbers turn out to be, and it's either going to third or kindergarten.
Right.
And I think our third grade is now at forty-one students. So we ended up with three teachers in there, we went over my threshold, yes. But if we were then looking at one extra student in the class number versus running a deficit, I think this board would've made a completely different decision, so.
I think at a, at a minimum, Debbie, is we're gonna need him to get us more information, whether he puts it out through email or what.
I think, I know that Corinne would like to do it sooner than later, but there's a couple of factors before we totally panic, like what is our tuition? And I, I would like to have Louis do it at the October meeting, cause I think you'll get a better overall picture. Because we'll know what we, what the tuition expenditures are for your nine through twelve students.
And we also, I believe we have at least one tuition, student tuitioning to our school.
Right, and so I think we can-
If not two.
Yep, get a, get a better look at that. And I will also share with him, um, like what ha, you know, the questions, what happened to that one hundred and twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollar surplus? Um, I know sometimes when you have a surplus at the end of the year, you apply it the following year. I'm not quite sure, I don't know what went on, but I'll ask him those questions.
What are these, what are these bill backs from the SU where it doubled what we had? I don't understand.
Okay, I'll share that with him.
My understanding, there's some major problems going on there in the bill backs.
There are some major problems going on with bill backs and what the state is disallowing.
Christine had a presentation at the GRCSU about it, that some things were being shot down. The, in fact, there's one of the laws right now that may be coming through next session, is gonna be to get rid of the bill back system. Because they're sitting here tracking all this time and spending all this time in labor.
So I can, I can get Christine to, cause she wrote it up for the GRCSU board. We'll bring that back for you guys too, and maybe she can, she had it written up. No, it wasn't GRCSU.
And I think, you know, we also have, when students through special education, when they come in needing supports, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball. So when we have kids that may enroll or are new to our school that need supports, legally, we have to support these kids.
Well, exactly, but that should be part of our, we get back from the state. But on here, he's got, added one special ed teacher, and we did that grudgingly, and, and five extra paras? Over what we had last year? What the heck is that about?
That's just, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Never saw that.
Support, that seems like a lot. I'm reading that.
We didn't add five paras.
Well, according to this, it is.
We have added paras, but I don't, and some of these are assigned, so I mean, I need to talk with Christine as well and Louis, because they are assigned to students with special needs.
Because, I mean, that's what it appears to be. I mean, when you read it-
And there's some times, so for instance, when your parent educator contract starts at seven forty, they, their student may not, they may not be wi- assigned, they may not need to be with that student at seven forty. So that maybe half hour is not billable. When they take their half hour lunch break, that's not billable. If they do, uh, duty, that's not billable. So add that up times twelve parent educators, you know, that's-
How many parent educators did we have last year?
We started with six, but we added some because of students that-
Right, but right now, you're saying we're at twelve?
We have eleven or twelve. Eleven.
So we doubled in one year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, I, like I said, we're gonna have to-
And these are students we knew that were, were coming with, that needed support.
Okay, we're just gonna have to talk to him, because this is unacceptable. I, I can't even wrap my head around it tonight. And I'd be very careful on spending. If it isn't necessary, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Let's not, you know, wow, we're still, you know, a couple thousand short here, yeah, go ahead and get whatever. Let's be real careful right now. Otherwise, I'd be with Corinne and say, okay, next week we're meeting on the budget. Um, but we can go a month and... Oh, and I'm not even here in October.
Can you provide any info in advance of a meeting, or does it-
Oh, yeah, we could.
You can, yeah, they can send it, but boy, that's a-
And this is one thing I've invited people to do, is to give Louis a call, if you can, and maybe, you know-
You don't want me to give a Louis call?
So is that, are you, do you include field trips on that, etc.?
The real problem is, what do we do about the field trips?
I mean, we haven't cut the field trips before, but anything else we can save on, um, definitely. I mean, now's not the time to go out and buy new desks and chairs and-
We don't.
I know, but I'm just saying, you know what I mean. You, you, you have been here when we've frozen the budget before.
Never September fifth, though.
Right, exactly. And, um, yeah, and I don't think you can blame the board on this one either.
No, no.
Or you guys, I know. So, um, and I'm sorry, for everybody that's new, it's not a, unfortunately, it hasn't happened, or fortunately, it hasn't happened in a few years. There have been years where we have literally frozen the budget. What you have is all you're gonna get, bare minimum, and that's it. Um, and that is the only way we have recovered from deficits in the past. But these are not de, I've never had a deficit that, like, never. And this is just astronomical. I just, uh, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna shut up.
Sarah, when were the, I'm a little hung up on going from the, the major increase in the, in the paras. Like, when did that occur properly?
Can we talk about, just cause it's about stu-, I would be happy to talk to you about it in executive session.
Okay, yep. But just to identify the person, so it makes sense, so why don't we?
Yep.
Yeah.
But even then, I mean, even if I, we had add them on, our payback from the state should be greater. So it's not like we're paying for five extra paras, we might be paying for four and a half, or maybe two, one or two, because of the money we'll get back from special ed, correct?
It looks like the lion's share of a problem that's coming to us is the, the-
It's both.
It's coming out of the parent educators, the additional, but most of that should be billed back, except for the lunches, except for the-
And I will bring in my paperwork from the last couple of months where we showed def, uh, showed extra money, and we'll find out where that went.
Yes, and again, I mean, we, we, I had advocated for an additional special educator when I came back in, I think it was our December meeting. Um, when we had over twelve new students that needed support. So I had, I mean, I had advocated and advocated for that.
Yeah, that was a, that was a har- hard win for you.
I have, I have numbers prepared here if you wanna see.
Nope, we're not even saying that. It, it's just, right now, we're in shock, so we kinda have to get off this right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sounds good to me. The, uh, personnel, anything we need to do for staff appointments, supporting staff, extra curricular activities?
We just have this one on professional staff. Aaron Odette, horizontal movement, meaning that he's gained more credits, so we've gotta move him, um, across the salary scale. From sixty-two, three ninety-five to sixty-four, four twenty. And Keith Schneider, horizontal movement from forty-eight, six one nine to fifty-six, seven twenty-two. That's per contract.
This isn't the, the best time to give our coaches extra money either.
No, I know.
No, I know, but I'm just saying. And then you want a committee that doesn't understand this to work, and never mind.
I'm gonna note here, strike the request for the new bleachers out back.
I just got, I just have this huge headache right now. I'm just, oh my god.
No, I understand, it's frustrating. And I, I'm frustrated because I also saw the email, which was, we knew it was coming and-
I'm sure you would've-
I think it maybe those were conversations with Dr. Taylor, possibly, but they weren't with this board.
But they did not make it back across our tables.
I don't recall it being here.
No, never, never, ever.
Alright, so nothing else? Extra curricular contracts, we can strike that?
Sorry.
Uh, quick chairs report, I'll try and move through these quickly, going back to the enhancement policy. Uh, I wanna stop real quick at grading. Do you, I wanna ask the principals, is there at least a possibility of moving away from this one, two, three, four? Moving it more towards college? Where, for example, I mean, I can relate to that, a three, five, and your cum laude, and, you know, magna cum laude, and you, you know, you, we use the entire scale. This current grading system, I have asked people, what's a three, two? And what's the difference between a three, two and a two, six? And I can't find a, tell me, from parents. I, it appears to me there's teachers reporting confusion in it, you know, people saying that it's, you know, could be a training issue and whatnot. I don't understand why we have a grading system where it's almost impossible to get a four, but a four is there. Um, we have parents being told, oh my god, I'm so upset, Johnny got a two point eight. They come in to meet with the teacher and finds out Johnny's got one of the highest scores in the class. How can you have the highest score in the class at a two, eight? It doesn't, it baffles the mind. Uh, in a three, two, I thought a three was meeting proficiency, and I'm on the school board. Apparently, I'm mistaken about that. Is the two meeting proficiency? Um-
The two is, the two is approaching, and it's not, it's not likely that a student's necessarily going to meet proficiency at the beginning of the year or even the middle of the year. Because it ta, it could take all year long to meet that proficiency.
But Debbie, is it, is it correct, because kind of me getting into the weeds with this issue with many of the teachers, that you almost can't reach the exceeding in the four unless they're doing a lot of extra credit, I guess you could say?
There should not be any such thing as extra credit.
So how do a, how does a kid get a four, or like a three point? Cause I don't even think-
You can never exceed if you can't have extra credit, is what the kids are told.
Well, you can exceed if you are applying what you've learned to a new situation. That's the way I look at exceeds. Yes? That's the way I kind of look at it. And we do have to do a better job of telling and explaining to students what that means. We haven't done a really good job of that. Um, so we need to be looking at our rubrics and being very clear about what it takes to get a four. What are we looking for? And I'm not so sure we have been.
Are teachers even giving fours? Because it's my understanding from people that I talk to, I don't think anybody's really getting a four. I mean, I, I think, I think the problem from my standpoint with this system is you're lumping in potentially a C-plus student with an A student. Like, it just-
They're not, they're not the same thing, though. A C-plus student was, would be someone who did, you know, seventy-eight percent of what they were supposed to do. Alright, and now we're not letting them stop and not do things. We're making them do each thing as they move along, so that they can be successful. So it's not like we're, okay, you didn't get that, that's too bad, we're gonna keep moving. We're not allowed to do that now. We wanna make sure that students know what they know. We wanna make sure that students know what they know, so that they can reach the next part of the benchmark till they meet proficiency. We're trying not to leave anybody behind anymore. That's, it's a different philosophy.
No, I know, it's, it's, but I, um...
Can we change the grading? I mean, the law doesn't mandate we, that we have this one, two, three, four, does it? Correct? Am I, am I right? So it doesn't mandate that?
You have to think about what the purpose of it is. If, if it's to give informa- is the purpose to give information to parents?
Yeah, so they understand where their children are and what health.
Okay, I, we, I just wanna make sure we don't get to the point where we're, where we're ranky kids.
Well, the thing is, I mean, when parents, and there's a lot of them I talk to, they have no idea how their children are doing. None.
They don't?
They don't, and they've given up looking online because they don't understand it. They have no idea.
I stopped, by the way. I just...
Yep, they talk to the teacher, oh, so-and-so's doing great. Okay, take your word for it. I have no idea. So you're losing the home connection with your children. Okay, it used to be, it's not a bad thing to have parental stress. You need to bone up on your English, or you have to do the, and that's gone. Because parents don't know what the kids are doing, well, how they're doing, a- and, and I don't see it getting any better over the last couple of years.
I don't think it's going to, because I, I just don't.
I don't think it makes any sense.
My personal opinion is, uh, the proficiency base may be a, a good system. I'm hearing from the educators saying that, yes, this makes sense, and this is the direction where you're going, but this grading system and the way that it communicates that information home, it's horrible, and it's atrocious.
Do you think it's the platform, jump rope? More the platform?
No, I, I, for example, exa- exactly just that. You know, for example, and I'll think, I remember Corinne saying this to me last year. Corinne was watching it day in and day out, and I said, you can't. You're gonna go crazy if you do. Okay, first of all. Second of all, all of a sudden, a jump took place, and she noticed it within one day, contacted the teacher, and was told, it couldn't have moved. Oh, it moved. Oh, it was a mistake and an error occurred. And that was, so if she wasn't watching it each day, she wouldn't have known that the error had occurred to draw the teacher's attention, and it would've just gone through. So what the hell is the system doing if...
The other problem is too, I mean, you just can't, like, all year, I think especially in the elementary school, I witnessed this as a parent, and I've heard this, that all year long, you have no way to gauge, right? Because the teachers can't even give them a meeting or exceeding until you get to, towards the tail end where all of the content has been covered, so you're meeting that. So it's almost like you get to April or May, and you're like, okay, we've now covered it, well, you're not meeting. And now it's April or May, and you're not meeting. You know what I'm saying? Like...
So where are we meeting students' needs by waiting to the end of the year and going, oh, we've identified the problem, and congratulations, you're going to the next grade?
Right.
Obviously, the teachers shouldn't be waiting till the end of the year to do that.
Well, some of the stuff is set up like that. That's come down from the SU, and Lisa, I mean, you're just getting in here new, but that was typical for Adam, is that we can't even have certain stuff until we get towards the end of the year to put this grade down. It's gonna be either not available is what was showing up on the grading. I mean, we couldn't get there yet. So that was actually pretty much standard practice in the SU to say, we couldn't, we had to wait till, you know, towards the end of the year, and then...
I think, I think in our attempt to give you lots of in-depth information, we're sort of losing that way to look at it in a holistic fashion. I think that's what your frustration is.
Yep.
You'd like, as a parent, it's easier to look at it as a whole, rather than getting so deep into the weeds of what we have to look at as, you know, as educators on the specific, um, with the specific standards that we're expected to keep track of, on whether your children have achieved those or not. And I think that seems to be where the frustration is. Am I...
I think it's thinking about the future. I mean, I, Debbie, you just said you don't wanna, like, look at ranking, and I, I hear you. I understand that. But I think we live in a society that we're based on competition, in the workplace, with college, all of that. So I, I think our concern, at least for my, like, what is this gonna look like in high school? What is this gonna look like when you're applying to colleges, right? I mean, colleges are ranked from Ivy League to a twenty-five percent.
Even more nuts is your SAT test. The students are ranked based upon their ACT and SAT scores. So we don't wanna rank, but then we're gonna have them take a test with the whole country and rank them? Uh, this is what doesn't make sense.
It's confusing to the parents still. It's confusing to the students, because I, I hear it, and I will use my own grandchildren or grandchild with this one. You can't get any higher. You can't, and you have to do something extra to get up higher than you are, but they don't have anything to give you. Um, and so therefore, they're just, whatever you need to do to get by. We're losing that push for the, the, the students that really need to push and need to put in more and are able to do so are just sitting back and not doing it, because they don't understand.
I hate to say it, but this is exactly what Nicole predicted three years ago.
It's what's happening. And I mean, I've been waiting, because you, you know as well as I do, every time I ask this question, when is this gonna be fully implemented? Oh, you know, and Adam, well, next spring, well, next fall, and then he'd laugh. Okay, I'm done waiting. This is crap.
That, that same thing happened in, with the hundred point scale. I mean, as a high school teacher for twenty-seven years, there were students like, all I need is a sixty-five, let me do the math and figure out what I can get away with.
But parents understood that and said, no, we know you're better than this, get going. Um, on this, when the parents look at this, they have no idea what they're looking at. None.
You don't know with a, you know, a two-five, for example, is that with little Johnny, or is he actually doing well? You know, and that's how we judge kids, unfortunately. I mean, we do it on the ACT test, the SAT, so. I, so striking that, my real question is specific, though. Can we move to a different grading system that may, may be a little more palatable to the parents?
Or at least do two. Is there a conversion that can be? Okay, it's two-point-six, a C would equal roughly a C minus.
I brought that up. That's what CBU is doing.
Why don't we bring this back to our, our leadership team and discuss it with them, and, and that, that concept that you just said? And we'll, we'll talk to them about it.
I, I saw it in the last, I saw it.
In the building, or just in the S U that you're...
In the building. This is just Rutland Town. This is just us.
So I would ask that you guys, the only reason I say this, we've been talking, you know, last year about it. We talked about this in the August meeting, and it was gonna go out there and we're talking about it, it's September. And, you know, and it's gonna get to the point, I think, that someone's gonna do some, I don't know where, on the SU level down here at this board level.
They can do some research and call some of those other schools that you mentioned too.
Judy, I think you were gonna, I was reading the notes, um, just cause I missed the last meeting, so I see in August that there was a lengthy discussion. I mean, I think that's what's concerning me. I feel like we're beating a dead horse. I feel like we've talked about this.
That's what I'm saying. This board's gonna do something eventually, and then people will be up in arms and...
Um, and it said in here, uh, Judy will confirm what the high school students are doing with their grading system. Did you get a chance to do that or not yet?
Not really, no.
Okay.
We, we have it on the docket to talk about, but we haven't gotten to it in our admin. We've only had one admin meeting in August, and it was tons of getting ready for school stuff that we did. So we have one coming up.
I mean, what is the state, like, bare bones require?
We have to show that our students are meeting proficiency.
Right. And however you do that, do they give any sort of guidelines that you have to do it a certain way?
And can I spin that just a little bit? Who said that a student with a sixty-one is not meeting proficiency on the state level?
Um, you can determine what your own...
Right, you can determine your own grading system.
Sixty-one is proficient. So why do we have to change it to a, you know what I mean? That's my strange question to you. Is it a student with a sixty-one meeting proficiency? I ended up in law school with a sixty-one, a sixty-two, and a sixty-three, leaving my senior year, and...
I wouldn't let my child be proficient with a sixty-one. Just your point.
But, well, isn't that what we did, though, when we set sixty as the limit?
Yes.
Back when I was in school, that was really, if you were down below that, guess what? You're gonna be staying back, and if you...
It was enough to know sixty percent of the material, and we didn't care what forty percent you didn't learn. Now we're supposed to care about that.
Well, yeah. And like I said, you know, God forbid, you go home with Cs on your report card. Now they can bring home anything they want, because parents don't understand it. And that's a shame.
It is. And the follow-up question to that, though, is, is that now we care, but how's that really make it any different here, though, in the school? So now that we've moved from the sixty and the sixty-one, you're meeting at, and you're saying, well, now we're looking at proficiency, and now we care. But what's the difference? What's different now, though?
Teachers aren't stopping and saying, they're not letting them go by and say, okay, well, you didn't, you didn't get that, so...
Too bad, we're moving on.
We're moving on. We don't care whether you've, you didn't master this particular skill. And that's gonna keep going.
Can you still do that and still give a grading differently?
I think this, it still comes through, and the teacher moves on, but then it's reported on the, you know, Johnny had a problem in this area, he's got a two-one, he's a two-nine for everything else, but do we really stop and go back to that kid and say, we're gonna identify, we've identified the problem area, he's not meeting proficiency? Is the teacher actually going back, stopping the class and going back to that area with little Johnny? Cause I'm not aware of it.
I don't think you can.
Who's going back?
Nobody's going back. How's it gonna go about?
Going, who's going?
Well, let's say, for example, that your skill is something in writing that they're working on. The teacher will give them another opportunity to show them that they know and can do that skill. They'll have another opportunity to show that. And while students are working on it, the teacher will circulate back to that student during the class time and make sure that they get what they need to boost them up to that, so that they can achieve that on the next assessment. So if you're saying, okay, I'm, I'm going to give an assessment on a certain topic, the teacher can be looking back at that, for that specific students to give them a second opportunity. It's not as overt as you might think, but the teacher has to target each individual student that way.
I'm just thinking it's really hard to, uh, no, but I also think it's hard when we get twenty kids in the class.
Yes.
Suzie's off on this, Johnny's off on this, this is what's going on, she's got an instruction to go forward.
Yep.
And I, I, I hate to say it, but I just don't believe that they're getting back to all those issues with each little one, that this one's not proficient here, and that one's not. And I'm going forward, and now I'm developing new issues and areas of concern, but I'm dealing with the old one. Mathematically, I'm looking at a class, and you could have two hundred problems for one teacher, and she's just trying to move forward in a class, or he is, and I'm not seeing that it's really getting mad, but...
That's what happened later, you know, when I went to school.
And that's one of the problems that we're running into, is that I know a child has, you know, a problem, we could start to look at tutors. I can't look at this grade and go, and is he behind, is he ahead, where he is? I gotta wait till we get to a parent-teacher conference, and be told he's doing great. Okay, wonderful.
Well, some of these, some of these curriculum are spiral curriculum, so that's why it keeps coming back around and around and around to things, so that students get a chance to, you know, developmentally, they must, might just not be ready for it right then, but then the second time, they're like, oh, I get it. And then it comes around again and again, and you'll see that our, um, our math curriculum is set up that way. Our, um, the foundations are set up that way.
That's how we do it, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of how we do it. So kids do get those opportunities, and it's built into the instruction that those opportunities are available for students.
Do you get the sense that the teachers like this system, or do they not like this system?
I don't think, they don't like jump rope.
But do they like this, the grading and how the proficiency is?
I think for, um, well, the one through fours, that's how elementary has graded all along. I think the way the report card is set up and the way that we're actually reporting, no. It's been very loud and clear, and Lisa was, you know, heard that.
So how can we fix it, like, quickly?
I think that's one of the things we've talked to Lisa about when she came on board, and she said, we're, we can't just throw everything away um, just because we know it's not working and we don't like it. We have to be methodical about this and do some more research. And Lisa, I'll have you speak if... Okay.
We do have a, a leadership team meeting tomorrow.
I agree, and I think, when I met with Lisa, I was like, okay, I'm so glad that you joined us. These are the fifteen thousand things that I don't like that we need to fix. And she was like, okay, I will write them down, and we will meet, and it, she's been very clear, like, Sarah, I, we're not gonna fix this immediately, and you have to be okay with that. And that took me a while. You've said that a few times. Like, Sarah, I agree. I can't fix, we're not gonna fix it tomorrow. We need to do research, we need to talk to see what other schools are doing, and we need to do this right. But she knows, I mean, she has the list in her office from a lot of us, and from me, saying, these are things that aren't working.
No, I know. I just, my biggest fear is, like, you look at a state like Maine that, like, unrolled some of this and said, this is a disaster. We've used these kids as a guinea pig. This is not working, and they've thrown the whole freaking thing out. So that's my fear. It's like, how many kids are we gonna maybe not steer in the right direction with this grading system, and then realize that, you know what, this has not served our kids well, and this really has not worked as well as we maybe thought it would?
Just a sec, can I just, just one second, Lisa, too. Maine, you have a friend or a family member that's up there, what's going on in Maine? Have they gone back to the old grading system, or they stayed where they were?
I would, I haven't really, I've more vented to her about, this is crazy, and this is what we're doing. She's like, oh, we did that, too, it was awful, we're throwing it out. So I haven't really asked her a solution-oriented, you know, so how do we fix it?
And I'm curious, cause people always say that it's thrown out, and I went in and I looked at some articles, but at the same time, the, uh, I'm curious to know actually what took place up there, whether they are back and off from it. But I wanna ask a pointed question real quick, and I'll let the discussion continue, but we can't have a one, I'm gonna, uh, this is a hypothetical question, and I wanna hear from each of you personally, non-political answer, please, is, we can't have a grading system that's one through four. What we have right now is, we cannot have it. What's the alternative? What, what do you think would work in its place? What would you support?
I don't, I'm not saying a one through four doesn't work.
No, 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 I'm, that's my hypothetical. I'm saying you can't have a one through four. What's your alternative grading scale? A hundred point system, A, B, C, D, F? Um, we can't have the one through four proficiency the way it's set up right now that we're getting it. So is it gonna be the hundred point grading scale, go back to the A?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't do a hundred point grading scale, because mathematically, it doesn't make sense. Um, so, I mean, you could do a letter grade, but that essentially would be the same as one, two, three, four.
We're just playing the game with.
You're playing the game, yeah.
But it's really like a conversion, though, because, I mean, you look at how they do it in a college. If you are getting, you know, ninety-sevens on your exam, it converts to your GPA, it's gonna be a three-point...
Seven-five.
Seven-five or a three-point-eight. So I mean, it should be relatively straightforward.
Well, that's the problem, though. It's not, though, because we can't get a four, and I don't know anybody that's gotten a three-five yet either. I've looked at a lot of kids' report cards, and I haven't seen a three-five.
I think we're having a hard time, because it's hard to quantify learning. And we're trying to represent learning using a mathematical system, and that's a really hard thing to do. And I, I understand that's what the conversation is.
What does all the feeder high school programs do? They're all proficiency, though, aren't they? So every kid that we push through to eighth grade is gonna go into proficiency-based grading, and we're not gonna be there to...
At, at Rutland High School, they grade using proficiencies of one through four scale, and then at the end, they convert to a hundred point scale.
Right.
So should we do that?
Tell me what the math should be to do that, and I'll make it happen.
Yep.
I'll come up with an algorithm to make it turn out exactly how it looks.
How do they do it? It, it was a disaster, I heard, this year. I, I mean, I've heard that the top twenty kids, for the first time in more than a decade, couldn't get into their first choice schools, because there was no way for the colleges to understand and rank them and understand the conversion, so...
Put them into a hundred point scale, so it shouldn't have been a problem on their report cards. They had a hundred point scale, it shouldn't have been a problem.
I mean, I think we, we agree there's, uh, something isn't working, and I think, like, day one, when Lisa came and met with all administrators, I mean, that's probably the first thing that I shared with you. Um, but I don't, I personally don't have a solution. I don't say, this is exact, I mean, I gave you some ideas of what some other schools have been doing and what, but I'm sure it's not perfect.
I mean, I think the, the way to do it is to put it on the scale and have the conversion, and then change the definition of really what proficiency is to meet the state standard. I mean, that's really the way to change it, really. That proficiency would, you know, if you have a, a, a two-point-six, you're meeting proficiency.
So we can, let us, let us bring this back to the...
Lisa, I'm curious. I just wanna hear from you real quick. I'm curious what you say about this.
So I was at the Vermont Curriculum Leaders Association meeting on Friday with curriculum leaders from districts all over the state of Vermont. Um, and we were able to speak with Secretary French as well, and this was a big topic of conversation for everyone, because everyone is struggling with the same things. Some districts are a little bit farther ahead than others in figuring it out, um, and I think that there are some things to learn from them. I'm gonna need a little time to do that. Um, and I think that there are a lot of really important conversations that you're touching on here. You know, like, what is the purpose of grading? And that's, that's a big conversation. And informing parents is a piece of it. Communicating to colleges is a piece of it. But there are also a lot of factors that go into communicating grading. You know, having opportunities for advanced coursework is absolutely a huge challenge, and our schools have been facing it forever. You know, we've always talked about the lack of offering for what we used to call gifted and talented students in other states that I worked in, but your students are ready for more advanced challenging coursework. That's a challenge for our schools and our teachers that we can handle. We don't need broad-sweeping policy. We just need to be able to focus on that and really work on it. And I think that when you're talking about the spiraling and coming back to things, and our teachers really not able to get to all of those kids, of course, they can't get to all those kids for all of those indicators, but your district is a great example of a district that has invested in interventionists for that second tier of support. And that when students are not able to reach proficiency in something, and when teachers just can't, where it's, you know, it's either too big of a deficit, or it's a topic that really they're not gonna circle back to in their curriculum, you have an excellent interventionist program. And from what Debbie and Sarah have been telling me, it's, it's really working. You're seeing results in students when they are coming back around to those skills over time. So there are lots of factors that go into this. So there are lots of factors that go into this. No grading system is perfect. There, there's never one that's perfect for everything. Uh, but what, a piece that I see as sort of, uh, a next evolution or a next step for us. With proficiency-based grading and, and teaching and learning and assessing is, um, most places. And I don't know if you're familiar with the work of Robert Marzano at all, if he, he, he really did a lot of work on proficiency-based education. And, um, he's a, a, a big, big picture thinker in the field of education. Um, and he has created guidelines for districts and schools around creating proficiency-based scales. That do exactly what you're asking for. What does a two point six mean? You know, what does a three mean? What are we actually, what's, what are we actually asking kids to be able to do? What performance or product do they have to be able to work themselves through to, to get that score? Um, and he actually recommends a slightly larger scale. He has a point five in the middle of each of the numbers, um, because it more closely mirrors what happens at college. In terms of how they're scoring GPA than how we're scoring grades. Um, so that's how he's set up his, his rubrics, but it's still a rubric with, you know, like six point value is on a scale. You know, the parent communication piece is a whole nother element of this. Um, and I know Adam had actually written into the, um, CFP grant some funding for, um, parent and community education. Activities and events and things to try to help to demystify this and what does it really mean for people? Um, one of the things that I have been just playing around with and in, in my mind is trying to create some experiences for people. That are, you know, quick fifteen, twenty minute little activities we can do that, that demonstrate this concept in real time. So that it's not just theory and we're talking about a lot of vocabulary and a lot of educational acronyms and, and jargon. That we use all the time when we talk about teaching and learning, but, you know, let's talk about learning, let's talk about, let's have an experience together. And then let's talk about how does that experience translate to how we're scoring proficiencies with kids in the classroom? So that we can develop a kind of deeper understanding of what does that actually look like? Cause I think what the teachers are seeing is that when you get down to the level of what does this actually look like in a classroom? From a student perspective, from a teacher perspective, some of these elements make a lot more sense to us. We don't have great tools for reporting them yet, as Sarah mentioned, you know, the jump rope software platform is not great. There's a lot of things about it that we don't love. We haven't been able to find a product right now that's better. So it's, it's where we are, but we've actually talked about a committee to see if there's anything new on the market. They did one two years ago, but, you know, you never know, software's new and inventive all the time. Um, trying to get back out there and see if there's something that might help. Because I do think that some of the, um, concern that you hear from folks, both teachers in terms of the reporting system. And parents in terms of the reporting system is actually the software platform that we're using. And if we had a better tool, um, it would make some of this conversation a little bit easier for everyone. So we have a number of different areas that we need to pursue, um, in moving this work forward. You know, proficiencies aren't going anywhere. The secretary was very clear on that, um, in our conversation. Uh, but how, how we're reporting them, how we're grading them, how we're assessing them, how we're communicating them. You know, that's the area where we have a lot of locus of control, you know, and can really as a district figure out. You know, what's a system that's gonna work for our kids and our families? Then making sure that everything that we're doing is supporting them in, in college and career readiness. And that no matter, no matter what we're doing, it's, it's supporting their entry into either the workplace or into college. And, and not hindering it in any way. And again, I know there's lots and lots of schools wrestling with that. Um, Wes Rutland actually had a committee last year, um, of teachers and counselors and staff members. And they worked really hard on that issue. And I think that they have some really great conversation pieces to share with the other schools and the other administrators. Um, they, they wrestled with a lot of those very things, you know, and, and talked about like, what does it mean for kids if we're not ranking? What would it look like if we did? You know, what would be the drawbacks? What would be the benefits? You know, how could this work? How are we gonna identify a, a valedictorian? How are we gonna identify a soliditorian? You know, really got into the weeds on, you know, what does this mean for our school district? And I think that they did a, a great job in, you know, making some initial steps forward and, and how to resolve those things. In a way that benefits our students as best we can.
So I wanna say something without getting too far into this, cause we've had a lot of late night meetings and everything else. But one of the things that, you know, leads me a little off is that when this first came in and I was just coming onto the board and whatnot. You know, this was tested a lot over in Proctor and then came out to the rest of the schools. But I was made to believe that this was the law and I had to follow it. And now as I've looked back into it and we've gotten more data, it's actually not the law. It, one, two, three, four is not the law. That's not the law, but I was almost told that.
Are the law, personalized learning is the law and P L Ps is the law.
So as we pushed more and said, well, what does it say? What does the statute actually? Oh my God, this doesn't have it in here, but we were being made to believe that this was the law we had to comply with, we had to follow. We can meet proficiency by making a sixty-one proficient. We can do that. You guys can change your teacher, you know, and the ways and how we're addressing issues, we can do with that. But if the one to four, in my opinion, it's just nonsense and the fact is, how can I have a grade on the scale that no one can get? And not only that, I really don't see, if I would have taken, ripped through the data of this school, I, I suspect, my just is suspicion. I'm gonna have a hard time finding many people three, four and above. Uh, that's just my guess, but I, I don't think I'm off. If you start pulling data, suddenly I think that would show up here. We're not gonna see, find a lot of three, four to four O material getting, so why do we have a system that has a grade on it that no one could obtain? It's just nonsense. So if I struck the one, two, three and four and I had to do something different, what would you do?
It's a great question. I, I would probably use language instead of numbers for levels.
You mean A, B?
No, no, like, uh, an, a narrative description, similar to what we have, you know, approach, beginning approaching, meeting, exceeding.
You just get rid of the A, B, see the hundred point scale, get rid of it all and just.
Authentic descriptor that we have for where our kids are. And again, we wanna communicate it well to the people who care about those children and who are looking at them for different reasons. So you, you still have to have something that, that really means where are they on the journey overall in these areas?
I mean, I just, I don't understand the whole sys, I think Matt, going back to like what you were saying back in high school. So like, you know, per grade, how many kids are we having that are not proficient? And are they staying back a year? Are all those kids that are not meeting proficiency, are we holding all the?
So what's the difference?
I mean, I just don't understand. It just, and I feel like we're, I understand they're not ranking. But I, I just feel that we're just lumping all these kids together. And I feel like we are not pushing these kids to do better. Like, I, I hear parents say all the time, like, they just write something quick and, uh, this is meeting. I, I, I just wrote this sentence, this is meeting, I don't have to do anymore. That's it. And I hear that in my house. This is conce, no, no, mom, now you're making me, this is gonna be exceeding. This is not what I have to do, like, this is now exceeding work. Well, you, you should be wanting to exceed. I, I just think the way that it's been communicated to our kids, we've really brought our kids down. Instead of trying to bring all of them up.
Which is definitely never the intention, but, you know, I think that we all share your concerns. You know, we're worried about the same things all the time and wrestling with this topic and trying to make sure that we're doing right by our students. Like, that's our primary purpose. So, you know, like, like Sarah and Debbie were saying, do, do we have all the answers? No, have I even been here long enough to, you know, start to be informed about it? Just a little bit, you know, but, but we're all working on it and all thinking about it and trying to learn from the folks who are a little farther down the path from us. And look at, you know, what are the things that we need to do versus what are the things that we should do?
I think until we all speak the same language, there's gonna be a massive disconnect.
Yep.
There's not gonna be any progress moving forward. So I think at some point, we need to just come down to brass tacks and start speaking the same language. So that way we can all be on the same page and move forward, because as Matt said before we even started this meeting. The goal of this group is to make these kids better. Not to bring kids down.
And in their way.
I just, I have a question. Is there any way, um, so in, I, I was saying this to Matt the other day. Like, in the world of public health, when we're dealing with drug addiction or, you know, diabetes or, you know, all of these different public health concerns. Like, we go to the research and we look to see, okay, what are people doing that's working? And what are the things that we can steal so that we're not always reinventing the wheel? So I said to Matt, why can't we figure out in the state of Vermont, who has the best game in town? And who is doing this the right way, that the students are moving forward, the parents understand? Like, is there anybody, any school in the state of Vermont that has got this figured out? That we can just replicate what they're doing?
I think there are, there are districts that are farther ahead of ours, but I don't think any of them would say that they have it all figured out and it's perfect. And that you should just copy everything that we're doing. I think every, you know, we're always trying to be better anyway, so we always have something that, that we think could be improved. But, you know, I do, there are definitely districts that, you know, have moved a little bit farther or they've had a little bit more time together. I think the districts that did not merge and unify under Act forty-six are actually in an advantage in this case.
Yeah, because they didn't lose.
They didn't lose all the time that we needed to spend on the unification work. They were able to push right forward with the proficiency work. So some of those districts are definitely farther ahead. And as I was speaking to a few of their curriculum directors about, you know, what are you doing? How did you guys get there? What does it look like now? And we've been sharing resources and contact info. Um, so it, it seems like there are some, some school districts that are a little bit farther ahead just by that virtue of circumstance. They were able to really focus that work when we had other priorities that we needed to take care of. And I think I'm gonna do a presentation tonight, and I, um, when we get there, um, on, um, a data piece that I think will. Dubtail very nicely with this conversation.
So a quick question, any of those districts around stay with the A, B, C, D, F? And not go, you know, one of the ones that are further ahead of us? Everybody on this one, two, three, four in the whole state?
Most of the districts that I have talked to in depth are having a rubric scale of some kind. Whether it's words or it's, um, one, two, three, four, but it's essentially a one, two, three, four scale.
Matt, what was the school? Was it Chittenden, South Burlington that is putting in parentheses?
CBU is doing the parentheses. I get a snapshot of that off someone's phone or the text. So.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
But that was where the principals and I had talked about this, but, I mean, I almost feel like this was just on to throw the, uh, throw turmoil into people's lives. Because I, I just don't, I don't understand how this idea comes from fruition. The legislature passes a general law and now the whole state switches to one, two, three, four. Like, how does that happen? Why is everybody spending millions of dollars trying to figure this system out instead of just educating the kids?
I think it was a major philosophical shift for educators within, in the state. I think that's really the big problem.
Educators wanna use it, that's fine. Just put in parentheses so the parents know.
I know, but that's.
Yeah.
Easy peeling.
And note, there are some simple communication pieces like that that really could help families, absolutely.
I think that we can't settle it tonight, but we can look as a group at different grading systems that are used throughout the state. And I'm really interested to see, as you said, Corinne, the research that Marzano's done. Of maybe a little bit more detail than just a plain one, two, three, four.
Well, I think that's, I mean, Lisa knows that. She heard us loud and clear when she came aboard. I mean.
Yeah.
Loud and clear. And you just said, please give me time, I can't fix it today.
Right, right. But we need to do the research and, you know.
But I, I'm, I'm tired of waiting too, so I understand it's gonna take time, but it's already taken years, so I'm kind of out of time.
Brand new, she's had.
I know that.
Huge amount of work to do this summer because she's picking up the slack from Adam. Trying to get all the professional development in place. There's a lot of things, but we do hear you. And she's heard us.
I hear you.
Oh, she's aware. And, you know, certainly being up on the S U too and.
Yeah.
But this is frustrating. It's very unfortunate that we ended up in this situation instead of just educating kids and using these millions of dollars. Cause I have no doubt from Bennington to Newport to Burlington to Brattleboro, that millions of dollars have been spent. Millions and millions and millions trying to figure out this new system instead of educating the kids. And I find that, you know, a little, I don't know, just very unfortunate, so.
A lot of replicating and reinventing the wheel in education. The curriculum leaders were talking about that also. And how to create vehicles and mechanisms for us to share information and documents and resources with each other. So that we can reduce that for, just as a group ourselves and, um, and try to be more proactive in terms of collaborating. We also talked about some potential regional partnerships. Um, I also sit on a, a group, it's the, the SEAL is the acronym, Southeast, um, group of curriculum leaders in our region. And we're also talking about trying to collaborate more as a region around working collectively on resources. So that we don't, we're not all doing the same thing and the same work in each of our districts. But that we're spreading that, that work and, and getting more bang for our buck across the board. So I think again, everybody across the state is talking about those things, um, they're just kind of starting, they're not.
Matt, can we move on? I think we beat this horse to death for tonight.
We have many, many times, so, um, all right, thank you very much. Moving on to the next issue, cellphone policy. Do the principals see a need for a cellphone policy in the school with kids being on cellphones? And do, do we feel the need to take it a step further, which is removing the cellphones from the children at the school when they come through? And you get them when you leave.
What is the exact policy, Sarah?
They should be off, um, in their backpack, they should be off in their lockers or in their backpacks unless it's being teacher-directed to use their phone. And that, that policy was before we really had a lot of one-on-ones. But I, you know, starting from the beginning of this school year, I, when we met with all of our teachers, I said, just a reminder. Cause when I came back, there were kids with cellphones and I'm like, what's happened?
Yeah.
So I, they've been excellent. I just said, expect, you know, we just, our in-service was a lot about expectations and procedures. And I said, cellphones should be off and away, period.
Now, wait, wait a minute, are we talking about the kids or the teachers?
The kids.
What are we talking about? Yeah, the kids. Are they allowed to bring it in the classroom or they're not supposed to?
No, we, unless it's teacher-directed, um, I say, no, it is off and away.
Cause most of the time they wouldn't need it anyway because they have their Chromebook.
And I would say ninety-nine percent of the time when they are caught with their phone, it's a parent texting them. They're like, what was my mom? I'm like, well, text your mom and tell her to stop texting you.
Yeah, sometimes they'll take them outside if they wanna take pictures of things or whatever.
Yeah, they've done stuff like that.
Data track of things, they'll, the teacher will have them bringing outside.
And, you know, a few kids, um, will take a picture of homework because they're trying to use different means to, you know, pen and paper. And may not work, calendars may not work. Some kids, you know, will take a picture. So it's, no, I think this year since the start of the year has been excellent with phones.
Have teachers complained in the past or like last year?
Yeah, when I came back last year, it was like, why?
It's just consistency really, mostly just, and the teachers have all kind of agreed that they're all gonna just sweat the small stuff. Which is what we should do.
Yeah.
Do you think we need any adjustment to our cellphone policy? Is there any problem going on?
No, not right now. I think I made the expectation crystal clear. The first day of in-service, phones need to be off and away, unless it's being directed.
Questions? So we'll come back and revisit that. I just recall hearing some chatter, um, from last year and into this year that the cellphones have been disruptive. Kids are on them all the time. I thought it was interesting where we had an alleged, you know, there, there was an issue last year. Uh, where stuff was posted on Instagram and the kids were here posting. So if they had no access to the phones and didn't have their phones, then how are those posts going out to Instagram?
That was an issue, um, and that's why I said it needed to be an expectation for all staff. When I was, when we were with them at in-service, that when they're outside at recess in the morning, they're on school grounds and school starts. No cellphones, period, off and away. So that expectation was crystal clear.
Any questions? Moving on, four-hour floater for lunch and recess coverage. Um, I'm gonna push this over to executive session just to discuss that. Um, and let's take it up there. Um, request for quotes on the new shed roof and paint. I'm gonna strike that considering the deficit we're now running. Moving on to old business, I need a motion to, um, list Cheney Hill for sale. Um, the, in addition, um, I mean, it's gonna be two things. Uh, it's down on the new business, so I'm gonna skip over the school snapshot real quick. And let's just see if we can get the motion for the authorization of the Cheney Hill listing. My thought was back to Betsy Franzone, she already had the file.
Yes, and she's recommending to list it at a hundred and nine.
I'm confused, uh, maybe I missed the last meeting. Is everything that the state, we, that we had to do, it's totally done?
Pretty much there. A few things are being finished.
To get it listed pronto.
What was it listed at before?
It was a hundred and eighteen.
What was the offer on it? Do we remember when we had?
Five.
Was it a hundred and five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And my understanding is, is that the other people that were looking previously are still around.
Okay, do you want me to make a motion now?
The, uh, so the first motion would be authorization to list Cheney Hill with Betsy Franzone for sale.
And allow me to sign the.
At a hundred and nine and authorization to list that and authorize Judy or myself to sign the listing agreement. The motion, you're gonna make that motion?
Yes, I'm making the motion.
Green's making the motion, do I have a second to that?
Back here.
Tim, I got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I think we should make it for two hundred and sixteen thousand.
You being serious?
I'm, I agree, Lynette.
That'll cover most of our deficit.
Aye.
But you're not gonna get that, but it's certainly a way to offset.
I said aye.
Aye. I appreciate that, that was funny. Um, the next, uh, so the motion passes unanimously, uh, next is the authorization for Gary Cupfer, a local real estate attorney, to handle this transaction with the closing.
I'm moved.
Lynette makes that motion, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Corinne, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Back up to school snapshot.
Have we passed old business?
The, uh, old business is done.
Did you ask?
What's that? Uh, the only two things were enhancement policy, which actually was up on the chair's report and Chaney Hill's school update unless someone wanted it.
I know, but I thought usually old business, we could, anybody have any old business?
Oh, anybody have any old business?
Yes, I do.
What do you got?
Did we ever get the money for the lumber sale? We need it now, baby.
Louis deposited that check, so this is what happened with the money from the lumber sale. So that's factored into our deficit, I believe, my understanding. And, but I could be wrong, and the reason I say I could be wrong was because you had made mention that we should deposit that money, uh, July second. And while we were having that discussion with Dr. Taylor, Louis had already put the money back in the bank, uh, prior, prior to April.
Okay, let's move on.
So.
And Lynette, you did say that.
Let's move on.
So.
Love it when you talk and you make a decision, you're ignored. Wait till his raise comes up. Sorry, did I say that out loud? I have no other, no old business now.
No other old business, any other old business for the board?
Can I just in, enter, can I just follow up on the behavior data? For, so I think we, it sounds like Debbie already got the invoice for that to track our behavior data. And I already, um, had emailed Robin Aiken, one of our behavior specialists, and she's going to try to start using that again. She's already trying to figure that out, so I just emailed the, yeah, the tech department to make sure the rest of us can, so we're on it.
So we're on it.
Thank you.
See if anything's changed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, do you want me to pass stuff out?
I was just starting.
Okay.
I think I'm just going to start with that.
Okay.
Another copy, Lisa? Nope, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're all good. Give one to me, you know.
We all jump and run, we all want to jump.
Teamwork.
Be.
You're welcome, I need to, I hurt this one just one.
Sure, sure, sure.
There's water on the table, I think. Now Matt's going to move it right along.
Ready to go? Let's do it, thank you, Lisa.
So what you have in front of you, um, is a packet with some general information about a new reporting tool that the Agency of Education is rolling out called the Annual Snapshot. What this does is it replaces the school report card that you may be familiar with, where each year our principals would try and pull together, um, kneecap data and presented and then NAEP data and now SBACK data. Um, and they would pull that together along with other information they wanted to share about the schools and publish it. Um, the state has subsumed this responsibility, um, and this is something that is required by the federal government in order to get federal funding. Um, so the state is complying with it, so, um, and they had to meet the specific guidelines set forth by the federal government for how to set up this tool. What things had to be in it, how they had to be measured and scored, um, and presented in a certain way. So there is some flexibility, Vermont has definitely made it their own, um, but just know that this comes from federal mandate, um, which is how, how it's being rolled out. So the first page is an overview of what the pieces and parts of the Annual Snapshot will be eventually, and they're not all live yet. Um, so not all of these things are available, but if you look at the academic proficiency, um, you see that's one of the, the big buckets. And then all of those details underneath it are the things that go into how the state is scoring us on academic proficiency. Um, personalization, and then those three bullets are the things that they're going to, how they're going to evaluate our score on personalization, high-quality staffing with the detail, safe and healthy schools and investment priorities. Um, so these are all the areas. These are based on the educational quality standards that the state has developed that, I'm assuming that you may have seen at some point in time. Um, perhaps when we were receiving feedback from our colleagues during an integrated field review, um, which we do every other year. Um, so these are aligned, so that's what the state has agreed upon is how they're going to present out on schools and that the components that they think make for vibrant and successful schools, um, and how they're going to report out on them. The second sheet just gives you some language describing, um, what those are, so there's just a list of each of those categories. The third sheet shows you how they are, um, rating under each of these categories. So they've come up with these little arrow symbols for us, um, four-point rubric, of course, cause they, we know how much we love those. Um, but they have two different metrics that they report on, um, one, performance, so that's achievement-based, where are you right now? And then the second is change, and that is really the growth metric that we, as educators are passionate about because we want to see where our impact on kids has been. Um, so those are the scores. Up to, on the top part of that sheet, the multiple ways to assess Vermont schools, you see there's four quadrants. And these are the four scores that you'll see in the snapshot. One is the current performance, so the performance for that domain or indicator in the academic year selected. Then the performance change, so that's the amount of change in that area. The current equity index, and this is, this is something really interesting that the state has come up with. Um, this indicates the difference in performance between students who have been historically underserved in schools compared to their historically privileged peers. Um, smaller differences in performance are represented by the meeting or exceeding rating and that we want them to be close, close together in that area and not have a gap. Um, so students who have been historically underserved is not a category that you would normally see on any kind of standardized achievement reporting. Um, usually you see free and reduced lunch, you see, um, a race or ethnicity group, um, something of that nature like you would see on your census categories. Um, what Vermont did, because many of our schools are so small, um, what they did was they grouped all of those students into one bucket that they're calling historically underserved. And in that way, in many cases, schools had enough students to actually be able to report out data. Because usually when we break those subgroups down in Vermont, they're too small. Um, so students with special needs is also included in that group. So it's a, it's an interesting approach that the state is taking and they're doing that because they want to be more transparent with stakeholders and taxpayers. They want to make sure that, um, we're, we're as honest as we can be about our struggles around equity. Um, and so they're trying to give us some information that we can use in looking at our own school programs and reflecting and developing plans for the future.
If we took all the money.
I don't want to rank them by grade, but we'll rank them by, by class of how much money their families earn, I mean.
We're slowly becoming California here. If we took all the money we're spending.
Are you kidding me?
If we took all the money they're spending to do this crap, we could more than educate all the children in Vermont.
This is insane.
It, it, ah, it came from the north.
Vermont doesn't understand like.
We have one teacher for five kids that solved this whole problem.
Holy shit, well, we could do it if we just got rid of half the people up north.
So Vermont's meeting a federal requirement.
I don't know if this is the night to look this over.
With this document, well, we don't, we don't, I mean, we can stop whenever you want to, we don't have to keep going through it.
Yeah, I.
I want you to know that it's coming just because they're, they're being released, they've been released and so these are public, this is publicly available information.
But is this, is everyone doing this across the United States or this is Vermont's take on Vermont?
This is Vermont's take on the requirement under the Every Student Succeeds Act that each school have a report card that reports out on metrics that they align with the federal government's idea of what makes an effective school.
Do you know who came up with this? Like, is it like a committee within the department of?
Yeah, it was like a giant work group.
It was the assistant, well, it was a committee that worked on it, but, but it was the Agency of Education. And I remember before I retired.
Two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, they, they started working on it and they would come and give us updates. It was, Amy Fowler was the Assistant Secretary of Education. Um, she was the person that was really in charge of this. And, cause I remem, when I came back, I call it my gap year, I said to Lisa, oh, I remember all those little circles and they telling us and.
Yeah, they did, they submitted the state plan in two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
And went back and forth in iterations with the federal government to get approval on it.
It took, it took that long for the federal government to agree to it.
I think we're better off not knowing what you're trying to tell us because I'd rather not know because it's just ticking me off more. I, I do not believe Rutland Town, I don't actually believe the SU, our SU has a problem with agnes, neth, yeah, I can never say it.
Ethnicity.
Yes.
Ethnicity, yeah.
Or anything else. All of our students are equal, we want to give them the best education and Montpelier is making it harder and harder to do this because they're making us jump through all these hoops.
Yeah.
Taking away from the time we should be spending on just the children and teaching them.
Yeah.
And, and that's, I, I, I guess I'm not in a very good mood tonight.
I'm sorry, but this is how I'm coming to meet you, I, I like to come meet you on nicer topics.
Well, it's just, it's like.
Subject and tell you about something lovely I saw on the first day of school.
Well, it's mean, I mean, well, you know, our children are doing okay, let's give the parents things they don't understand, then they don't know how the kids are doing, but they all look like they're doing great. Um, okay, let's, let's, you know, break them out and for a country that is trying to get everybody united, they spend an awful lot of time showing and pointing out the differences and what we should be looking for to make sure we're not doing it differently for all different people. I mean, it is just, common sense is gone.
You know what they do, Lynette, the thing that draws me nuts, I've yet to see, really, to be honest, I mean, this is going to seem really rude, but I've yet to see like one good sort of measurement, metrics that Vermont has ever, I mean, it is.
Never.
Literally insane.
And I mean, and if you look.
And they set these frou-frou things that sound good in theory and then they have really no idea how to measure it.
These people have nothing to do, I'm just telling you right now.
So I just, I don't even understand how you're going to measure half of these things, I just.
I'm sorry, but it is ludicrous, I'm sorry, I think we're, and you're going to say, well, it's because you're old, I am thirty years ago, okay? You sat down, you did it, you knew what you, you knew if little Johnny was reading right or not, if not, we gave him extra help, but no, now we have to test him six ways to Sunday to say he needs a little extra help. I, I mean, we don't need all these tests, we don't need, we're taking away from their education.
Trust me, we've had, we, some of our second grade teachers, they mapped out how many assessments and I don't even remember the number, but it is unreal.
It's ludicrous, it really is.
It is testing, 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 testing.
How are our children supposed to spend any time really learning if we're doing this other crap? I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to shut my mouth.
You know what I was most concerned about what you just said was that this is coming down from the federal government, some of this stuff?
It's Vermont's take on how to define the.
Oh, it's Vermont's take.
Vermont's take on this, eh?
If I can just explain real quickly how this all works. Vermont accepts and all the schools accept federal dollars and that's our big CFP grant and special education money.
I don't know, Rutland Town doesn't get much, so I think we should tell them to keep their money and we'll educate our children.
You could. And when you accept federal dollars, it comes with strings attached.
Right, but that's Vermont's and the same with.
Where, and Vermont?
All of them, Act forty-six and everything else, it's Matt.
That's true, because I looked at this, I just looked at this and go, the federal government's moved towards proficiency?
No, this is Vermont's interpretation.
Grabbed a hold of it and said that this is what it is.
Just like Act forty-six, it's their interpretation and all it costs is extra money.
It, you're right, Lynette, it does, I, where's the boatload of the savings?
There is none.
There isn't one.
None.
I mean, it's basic common sense, you consolidate a bunch of schools and you go from three schools to nine, you're going to need, need way more staff to run the supervisory union, right?
I don't blame parents for, for having homeschooling, I really don't, and then they get out of all this crap.
And I'm just throwing numbers out, but I mean, it's just.
They really do, it, it's getting to the point where it's just bureaucracy.
What did you say, Lynette, I missed what you said.
I said, this is why more and more of our, um, residents are homeschooling and I don't blame them. I really don't. You can spend four hours a day with your child, homeschooling them, and they're going to get more than they do here for seven hours. But, I, I'm trying to do the best we can, we all are for our children, and by jumping through all these hoops, we're not doing it, we're not getting where we need to be.
So let me ask you for a summary, are we instituting that this year? This is what came down and?
This is already instituted.
It's already been going on?
Live on the world.
We're in the institute.
So we're here?
Yeah, that's why we're here.
Sarah and Debbie.
So are you, when does this, so we've already gotten a snapshot of our school for last year or is it coming in this year is basically what I'm asking?
It's actually the seventeen, eighteen data that is available right now. Um, in the back part of.
So two years ago.
Yeah, so really old news. Um, in the back part of this packet, there's a rollout plan from the state that just shows how, which parts of this tool they're going to release over time. It's a multi-year rollout, it's not going to all be available right away. The only thing that's available right now, um, because it was a requirement for federal funding, um, and a deadline that they had to meet is SBACK data. So that's the only thing, it's seventeen, eighteen, um, they have a formula that they've used to create these metrics. Of course, it's a really nice, using, complicated, impossible to easily calculate or explain, um, formula. There's a, uh, visual to kind of try and help with it, um, on the second to last page of the packet, the picture with the two triangles coming out from it. Um, so the, the scores that they give, that performance score is based on the, right, in, in the academic achievement, which is the only one that we can see right now. Is based on the seventeen, eighteen SBACK scores and they do an overall average of the aspects that you take, yours, in your school. So ELA, math, science are the only ones available, um, at this point in time, so that's your performance score. The change score, how they're measuring whether or not your scores are going up or down, is this lovely convoluted formula. So fifty percent of the change score is looking at the change from your sixteen, seventeen to seventeen, eighteen SBACK scores. So one year, one cohort. We know in our schools, especially in smaller class sizes, some cohorts can be widely variable, so that can be really tricky data to look at. The other fifty percent of that change score is a formula they built on ranking. So they take Sally, I know, I know.
I, I'm reading this and I'm like, okay, wait a minute, hold, hold on a minute, okay?
What is this, what is this any of this mean?
One thing I'm reading, I mean, this is so insane, it literally, do they even understand what they're saying? I mean, first they're saying we don't want to rank schools or, or compare schools, but in order to really understand what the schools are doing, we're really going to have to rank them to, because mathematically.
Oh, no kidding, we're going to rank things?
Mathematically, you can't figure out where anyone stands unless you do rank.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, well, it was funny, I, I had to laugh the other day. Yeah. Well, it was funny, I, I had to laugh the other day because they won't let the kids in grades one and two keep track in soccer or what the goals are.
Yeah.
So the funny thing is, the kids keep track of the goals.
Of course they do.
Even though the coaches and the refs won't let them do it, the kids are actually tracking how many they have and keep track of them. Uh, because competition's good, that's what America's all about. That's what the kids want to do innately. By nature, on their own, they want to compete. They want to. And that's what makes this country great. So to think that we somehow just and, what are you doing? We're back to ranking schools again.
We don't, we don't need that. We're gonna give everybody, everybody's gonna pass, everybody's gonna get a trophy, everybody's gonna get, go home, all the smiles on their face.
Oh.
I'm sorry, did we ruin your entire presentation?
You're kinda done. You're not, you're not into it.
Yeah, yeah, we're out of it tonight. But you know what? The, the one thing that I would say though, that's caused me pause, and I just want to end on this if we can, I think, we're gonna go all night on it, but at the end of the day, what's made me pause more is what Debbie said to me, and I'd asked Debbie this last year, and I said, are you, is this moving in the right direction? And she, she said, yeah. It really is. I mean, what we're doing, we're moving in the right direction, that the competition is bad in school. And I just, I, I have some instinctive issues with that, but you're saying we're moving in the right direction, and you're saying we are moving in the right direction, we're doing the right thing. Because I would like to just scrap everything and go back to the way we were, and send home the grades in the folders every night, then I can look at an A plus and an A and an A minus.
I'm just looking at-
And Debbie's saying it's the right thing to do. You're saying it's the right thing to do.
I'm just looking at our seven million dollar budget. State, keep your money. Feds, keep your money. For seven million dollars, I bet we could have one hell of a school.
I bet we would too. Cause all you would do is just focusing.
On the children, that's why we're here.
Education would crush us, and that's what's keeping us from probably doing something like that.
We'll just do it in-house and we won't have, no, because we won't need all those people to report to everybody else, because you know what? We're not taking your money. We don't have to report to you. I'm, I'm just, I know we can't. Then we become a different type of school and blah, 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 blah. But I'm, that's what it's coming down to. We're here to teach the children. We want them to have a great education. Uh, but it's getting so, I, I just, ah.
I just think we need to find a way to cherry pick, and I don't know how, that's up to you guys, but this is a hard, hard topic, and it's very frustrating for people, and I'm not sure it's the right way. I really am, I'm not, you know?
And how would you explain that to the parents?
I'm a researcher. I look at like data every day of my life, and it's, it makes, I, it's just, it's like ridiculous. I don't even get it.
Well Springs, and if you stuck with it at the end, I thought it was very understandable. She had more material for you.
But you're an educator.
I just think that's, no, no, the Well Springs Board, they got it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not saying they're dumb. I am ranking people.
Today is the right day.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying-
It's the right day either. I do, I think that once you go through it and you see it, and we've talked about it for a while, it is very possible to-
If you stop to think, I mean, I know you haven't been with us. How many years, Matt, has this, all this stuff been dribbling down slowly, slowly? Okay, when is, when are we gonna have the programs K through eight? You know, I don't think it's gotten past fifth grade yet. Um, you know, oh, look, the, the lower grades are doing great. Look at the improvements. Okay, and you, the higher you go, the less they are. So we're still not doing everything right, okay? And, and like I said, why are we starting with the little ones? When the big ones are getting ready to leave, you should be going the other way. Cause these guys will have a lot of room to catch up. It's just, I don't see us progressing anywhere.
I don't, how long is it? Proctor was the first school in the district to roll this out, right, Debbie?
Allegedly.
And how many year, Proctor has been doing this? Six years now?
They're eighth year? They may, they might have looked, probably six, because the first two years they were looking into it, so.
So six years, right.
Yeah. I mean, so your entire, just about your entire children in this school have already come and gone, and we're still implementing.
Well, they are, but not only that, their scores are probably the le, one of the least in the district. So, and when we merge, Polton actually has the higher scores, but they're teaching to the test, but there, it's kinda weird that it's been in Proctor in the longest, but they're showing the lowest testing scores right now in Proctor. So what point do you get where you say enough's enough? And am I, I'm not far off in saying that, am I?
Well, I, I think that if you're using a single measure, then you get a single data point. And in that data point, you can, again, look at comparisons and how things change.
Like any data.
I also think that that single measure doesn't really reflect all of the things that make a great school a great school. And I think that a lot of the things that you and the families here and the students love about Rutland Town are not necessarily things that you're gonna catch in an S-BAC test and be able to show data on. There's other data to look at and other information to look at in what makes a school a great place that kids want to come to, teachers want to work at, and parents are proud of. So, you know, I, I think in that regard, you, you've gotta look at more than just one piece of what makes a great school.
Can we invite you back again once we calm down?
Yeah, she can. Happy to.
Maybe we should put her at the front of the agenda, though.
Yep.
Get us to answer.
I will, like I said, I, I would also appreciate that anytime.
Yes.
A heads up on the budget would have been nice.
Yeah, we'll get there.
You know, something that just stands out to me over the last hour is we spend an exorbitant amount of time on things that we don't necessarily agree with.
Right.
But I think we spent very little time on how could we best support the principals as it relates to how do we help them achieve these goals? You know, something like in private business is continuous improvement.
Right.
And we do that in our organization and probably lots of other organizations by continuing to focus on what's right and what are the things that we can affect, change on systematically as we move forward. Uh, we will get a lot more things done by focusing on that than we will sit here for three hours and debate things that we will not change today.
Right.
I'm just gonna leave it at that. Not saying that I don't wholeheartedly agree with A, B, C, D, F, because I do, but we can sit here until we're blue in the face, or we can really get down to brass tacks and help. How do we help make goal one, two, three, four come true?
I think it's all connected. I mean, in my opinion, I think, to be honest, I think it's right, the biggest issue on the table. Because at the end of the day, the goal, I think, of being on the school board is to make sure that the kids are performing really well, and the kids are doing really well academically. And I think if we don't fix a lot of these things, we can't really get to a lot of Debbie's goals. When you really look at it, I mean, read her goal number one. With the proficiency, I mean, I don't even know how we would measure that.
I guess the only way I would know how to do that is look at how many ones, twos, threes, and fours we had last year versus how many do we have this year? Regardless of what the number means, who has one, two, three, four? How many do we have? How many do we not have now?
And that's what we need.
So to me, very simple, that's the way you could look at that.
And I, I'm, I think the one, one of the takeaways that I have from just this very basic introduction that Lisa did, because she didn't, she had more to share, but I think it's really interesting, if you look at, I know the graphic is kinda hokey, but that in addition to performance, that they're looking at change. And whether as a school and as a student, are they declining? Are they not improving? They're just level flatlining? Are they improving, or are they excelling? And I think that that data there, that gives you a much fuller-
That's better than one, two, three, four.
Well, you know, and I'm think, I'm sitting here thinking about it, and you're talking about one, two, three, four. It might be that that's something we need to look at in including our grading. It's not just, are you meeting, exceeding, you know, approaching, but also each student. You know, the, if the teachers could say, are you, are they improving? Have they declined in their performance in whatever area? You know, are they excelling? I think that somehow, maybe if we look at that and we look at Marzano's bigger grading scale that has more nuance to it, we might be able to come up with something that's more understandable.
I just don't understand how they're gonna measure any of that. And I see Vermont doing this.
I think Lisa needs to come back because she-
With every agency it runs, like, I, I hate to, I sit on a lot of different boards, okay? They come out with these things that sound great in theory, okay? Just like when they were doing with all the nonprofits, we're gonna now do this, what were they calling it? This, this insane metrics performance. And they set these things that sound really good, but at the end of the day, how are they gonna measure this? Like, what is gonna be the percent of the change? The percent of change of what? You know what I mean?
No, I understand.
It sounds good, but like, how are you measuring that?
How are you measuring improvement?
How are you measuring that?
What are, what are you?
Do they have, like-
How are you looking at to look at it?
Do they have like three statisticians that are gonna sit and do this? Because in order to do this right, they're gonna need to hire statisticians.
Yes.
Are they doing that? I mean, who's measuring all this and looking at that?
Or do each of the schools have their own?
And I think one of the frustrating things is when we talk about kids not making progress, like the one of the things that I know you didn't get into tonight, but, you know, those, we didn't make enough progress for those students on free and reduced lunch and those students, um, on IEPs. And I, I, I can only speak for us, but we've had kids that have exited IEPs.
Oh, yeah. You're not testing the same kids.
When, I'm like, you, I want you to look at the whole child, you know, they're, they're attending school almost every day. They're, you know, they went from kindergarten grade level to a, almost four grade levels in a year and a half. But yet, we're not making enough progress with them. I just think they, ah, yeah.
And not only that, Sarah, as you know, we have that transient group.
Yes.
So they're here, they test this year, they're gone next year, and we have three different ones. And the state wants to go year by year. Well, you can't do that. You-
And then we're looking at data from two years ago on kids that aren't in our building anymore.
So I, I don't know what the answer is. It's just frustrating.
And when I look at some of that, I want like more of a breakdown, um, and it doesn't, and even some of the data, like for science, it says we're meeting, but it doesn't say if we've increased or decreased.
Are we improving or not?
How have we improved?
Cause it hasn't been, that's, cause that's when they started the test.
That's when they, correct, when they started the test.
So that will come out.
And we were, even though, with the test, even though the Common Core came out at one year, we were still testing kids on the old science standards.
And how many years does it take to get that to be accurate? I think it was four or five years to get an accurate measurement.
And remember we-
So most of our kids are gone.
And remember we were told that it would be immediate?
Yeah.
Remember that was the one thing? You're gonna get immediate feedback.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna move on, buddy?
To your old feedback over the summer.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa, and I apologize.
It's okay. I'm looking forward to coming back again and having more great conversations.
You have no idea how much this deficit is killing me over here.
You're kill, you're killing yourselves having these really in-depth conversations about things that are really, really hard, but how, how lucky are the kids to have you wrestling with those things and trying to make sure that you're making the right decisions for them? I mean, ultimately, that's, that's all of our responsibility. So kudos to you for having the hard conversations and trying to find the right pathway forward. It's important work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Now you know what these poor ladies go through all the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, next meeting we have coming up, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. I just looked on the map, saw that, or on the calendar and saw that it was Columbus Day.
Can we do it the week before, then I can be here?
The fourteenth. The, um, does anybody, and so I, I'm not sure the state celebrates Columbus Day anymore. I don't believe they do. It's not a state holiday. It's federal. Does anybody have an objection to bumping the meeting up to, actually, you know what? I can't make it to the seventh, but if you want to be here, I can't be here the seventh.
You wanna go, or?
I can't be here the seventh, so.
You wanna go twenty-first instead?
Oh, I can't be here, well, I could come back. Um-
Because if we're looking at budget, then we really ought to all be here.
I mean, there's nothing we can do with, I mean, Lewis's things that, I'm looking for some guidance from you guys. I don't know if there's any guidance we can give them. So is it gonna make a, be a big deal if we push this to the twenty-first?
That's a Monday?
Cause Green was talking about being back here in two weeks, and now instead we're going out.
We have Quarry Valley.
Oh, you have Quarry Valley, so.
On the third Monday.
That's what causes that trouble when we try to move it. I want to say, every time we try to move, we run into issues with somebody.
Do a Tuesday or something?
When's Well Springs meet?
Well Springs is Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
The first Wednesday, yeah.
So they're on the sixteenth.
Well, I mean, you guys can do it the seventh, and I'll, I'll try and be here, but I'm not hopeful that it's gonna occur, but it could be close.
Debbie's not gonna be here that day. I, I, that's gonna be tough, tough for me on the seventh, to make it back here.
And Debbie can't be here, so we're already-
And who's meeting the eighth?
I don't think anybody.
Nobody. Sometimes Ira does, but they won't in October.
You wanna do it, can we do it on the eighth? Are you gonna be here the eighth?
I'm wide open on the eighth.
I can do the eighth.
I can do the eighth, if it's no problem with anybody else.
That's a Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday, the eighth.
Can you rose?
And we're meeting now at six o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
Why did you used to meet at a different time?
We were at five-
Then we went to five thirty for Lisa.
We were six thirty, then we were five thirty, and now we're six.
After December, I don't care.
So it's the eighth.
So six on the eighth at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. School board.
Okay.
That's okay with you, friends?
Yeah, I-
See if we can get them some nice-
You're not gonna be a world traveler that day?
I don't know I'm gonna be. I just don't, I have to go to California, and I have to go to North Carolina, and I have to go to Miami. I just don't know when yet.
So that will be October eighth at six o'clock.
I make a motion to so move the October meeting to the eighth at six.
Second to that.
Aye.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Last motion, I'd move that we go into executive session, uh, in part based upon negotiations, in part based upon personnel, in part based upon attorney-client privilege, and in part based upon a confidential security matter.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Wonderful. Motion passes unanimously.